...meeting for July 15, 2004. We are so excited to be here with all of you at the Redwoods. So, thank you for having us here. This is a good Mill Valley moment where we each clap for each other. So, we are going to run this meeting slightly differently. There are items on the agenda which I think are of great interest to you. There are items on aging initiative, for example, on safety of e-bikes, on affordable housing. So, we have specifically put together an agenda that I think will appeal to all of you. There'll be plenty of opportunity for all of you to speak, to ask questions, and to get a pretty decent response from us as well. So, this is going to be a little bit of a city council meeting slash community forum, and we definitely want to hear from you. So, when we do public open time, which we will do, this will be an opportunity for you to ask questions about anything having to do with the city of Mill Valley, and we will do our best to give you an answer on all of those things. Does that make sense? Okay, so we have a couple of business items to take care of really quickly here at the beginning of the meeting. Then, you're going to see something that you've never seen in a city council meeting before, at least as far as I'm concerned, which will be fun. And then we'll get into the rest of the meeting. Okay? So, first of all, call to order. I'm going to call this meeting to order. I'm going to note for the record that all members of council are here, and I thought, since this is the first time we've had a meeting at the Redwoods for a very long time, I thought it would make sense to just introduce ourselves so you know a little bit about who's on your Mill Valley City Council. So, and also our staff who are here. So, I'm going to give everybody a chance to introduce themselves. I will start with myself. I am Urban Carmel. I am the mayor of Mill Valley. I've been on the city council for four and a half years. I've lived in Mill Valley for 25 years. I raised my son and my daughter here. I love this town, and that is why I'm on the city council. I am a huge fan of the Redwoods, if you didn't know that. I am generally out on the street corner on Fridays, playing that guitar right there with the Redwood seniors and singing songs. Well, I would recommend holding your applause until you hear me actually play the guitar and singing because you may change your mind. I'm now going to pass it down to my council members going down the line. Everybody introduce yourselves in a similar fashion, please.
Hi, I'm Stephen Burke, vice mayor. I do not play the guitar or sing, so I won't subject you to that. 24 years in Mill Valley. My wife, Kit, and I, and our two children, all grew up here in a way. Began serving on the Parks and Rec Commission around 2010, participated in the general plan and some other activities, went back on Parks and Rec during COVID, and then had an opportunity to be appointed to council about three and a half years ago, and have enjoyed my time on council, particularly getting to know our fine staff and the great work they do on our behalf, and how well they understand our town. So, it's a pleasure to be here.
Hello, everyone. Max Paray. I've been on city council a little over two years at this point. I served on our city's emergency preparedness commission for four years prior to joining the city council, including as chair in my last year. I also co-founded Sustainable Mill Valley, including with folks who are active in Mill Valley Seniors for Peace and other folks at the Redwoods. And I grew up in town, moved away for college and grad school, moved back nine years ago, and have been active in our town ever since, and I'm always enamored by the wonderful people and natural beauty in our community.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Caroline Joakim. My husband and I moved here to Mill Valley about 20 years ago. I was working as an attorney, and we raised our family here, two kids. I got involved with a number of volunteer activities, including with the schools, the library, and Mill Valley Little League. And I ran in the special election last year, was it, yep, April 2023, so I've been on council for just over a year. And it's been a very exciting and wonderful experience, and I've really enjoyed working with our city staff as well as my fellow councilmen. It's great.
Hello, my name's Jim Wickham. I'm a recovered alcoholic. Just kidding, you guys. Have a sense of humor, city council meeting. So, my name's Jim. I'm fourth generation Mill Valley. I lived there my entire life, all 66 years. When I was at Tam High School, guess what? They were building the Redwoods. And my family has been down here before. I had an aunt who lived here. She was 106, passed away. Interesting note, I have five children. I was married here in Mill Valley. My wife, unfortunately, after 40 years, passed away of breast cancer, so I've been single for the last three years. So, the, you know, different part of my life. But I was with the Mill Valley Police Department for 37 years, back in 1975 to 2010. So, I've seen a lot of Mill Valley. I've helped a lot of residents out here, the Redwoods. I've been on the city council for nine years. So, living here my entire life, being with the police department, I really have a sense of community with Mill Valley. I also have a very good sense of humor. I've enjoyed my nine years of the city council. This will be my last year. We have a two-term unofficial limit, so this is my two terms to the city council. And end of this year, I'll be hiking Mount Whitney and other various locations in the world where I'm going to enjoy life at 67. So, thank you. I was mayor back in 2019 when we were all here, and with COVID, we never came back. So, I'm really grateful that the mayor has decided to come back to the Redwoods. You guys are a huge part of our community, and I truly enjoy being down here tonight, and hopefully ask some great questions, just have a good time, and enjoy yourselves. So, thank you very much.
Go ahead, Urban, clap. Yeah, yeah, thanks, Jim, for your brief introduction on yourself. Could I have our city clerks introduce themselves so you know who they are? I think you've got one microphone. No? Neither microphone works?
Testing. There it is. My name is Hannah, and I am assisting our city clerk, Risa Day Ferrari, a management analyst, and we're excited to be here.
Thank you, Hannah. My name is Risa Day Ferrari, and I've worked for the city of Mill Valley for six years. I recently transitioned into the city clerk role. Hannah is transitioning out, which is why we have two clerks here with you this evening, and very happy and honored to be here. Thank you.
Great. And our city attorney and our city manager, please introduce yourselves.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Indra Kalsa. I'm the city attorney for the city of Mill Valley. I've now been the city attorney for four years.
And you're also the city attorney for the city of Davis.
I also represent the city of Davis and a few smaller agencies as well.
Hi, everyone. My name's Todd Cusamano. I'm your city manager, and I've been here for almost two years now.
Okay, well, that was the opposite of what Jim just did with his introduction. So, thank you, Todd and Indra, for that. Okay, good. So, action out of closed session. So, we sometimes have a closed session where we meet with Indra, our city attorney. We did not have one today, so there's no action. I would like a motion to approve the agenda order for today.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Okay, for the record, 5-0. Okay, so, we are going to do presentations here in a moment, starting with the aging initiative. However, I thought that we should start today's meeting by singing the hammer song. So, this is why we're doing this. So, in 2019, I was encouraged to go down to the Redwoods, join the seniors on the corner, and meet them, and I did so. And I met a woman that many of you probably remember, Elizabeth Moody. And Elizabeth and I became, I think, good friends. Elizabeth, you might know, was a founding board member for EAH, and I was very interested, because I was the chair of the planning commission, I was very interested in affordable housing. And as it turns out, EAH became our partner on Hamilton Drive, which is our 100% affordable housing development, which is now going out for funding. So, Elizabeth and I became good friends. I started going to the Redwoods every Friday to sing, and about nine months later, Joanne Robinson, who many of you know, who's been singing on the corner for 20 years, said, "Hey, if you're going to come out here, why don't you at least learn to play the guitar?" So, which was good advice, and I should take her up on it. So, I haven't learned to play the guitar, but I did bring guitar. I am going to play it. I am terrible. And my two other guitar people were supposed to be here, but they've stood me up. So, hey, that's just the way it works. Okay, so, the lyrics are on the screen. I expect all of you to sing very loudly. That includes all members of council. The former mayor is noted for speaking a lot, so here's your opportunity.
Is this item on the agenda?
Yeah. Doesn't have to be. Okay, here we go.
I guess that's when you're mayor, you have these powers. You guys already out there? I better hear your voice.
Okay. Okay, is everybody ready?
One, two.
Okay, ready. If I had a hammer, I'd hammer in the morning. I'd hammer in the evening, all over this land. I'd hammer out danger. I'd hammer out warning. I'd hammer out love between my brothers and my sisters, all over this land. If I had a bell to ring, I'd ring it in the morning. I'd ring it in the evening, all over this land. I'd ring out danger. I'd ring out warning. I'd ring out love between my brothers and my sisters, all over this land. How many verses do we have? That is a song. I'd sing in the morning. I'd sing in the evening, all over this land. I'd sing out danger. I'd sing out warning. I'd sing out love between my brothers and my sisters, all over this land. Now, I've got a hammer, and I've got a bell to ring. And I've got a song to sing, all over this land. It's the hammer of justice. It's the bell of freedom. It's a song of love between my brothers and my sisters, all over this land. Love is that. All right. Yeah. Very good. I believe that's the first and probably the last time that'll happen at a city council meeting, but I'm glad we did it. Thank you, everybody.
When it's Stephen's turn to be mayor, it's going to be every meeting.
Okay, so there you go. That got everybody's vocal cords all loosened up. We are now going to get into our presentation. We've got four presentations. Our first presentation on aging and disability initiatives in the city, and I thought council member Joakim, do you want to introduce our speaker, since you and she worked well together?
Yeah, absolutely. So, I'd love to bring up here for all of you to hear Kristi Denton Cohen, who about just over a year and a half ago, became our city representative to the Commission on Aging. And then she is just that fabulous and fantastic that they made her chair of the commission as of July 1st. But I was very excited to have her on board to the Commission on Aging. We quickly had conversations about picking up on the age and disability-friendly initiative that was started here in Mill Valley back in 2017. So, we are picking up the torch, and we're going to run with it. So, may I introduce to you Kristi Denton Cohen.
Okay, I think this is on. You know, I've been practicing this little speech, and I've been speaking it, but Urban, I think I should sing it.
Oh, yeah. Well, here, let me get my guitar.
There's a lot of information here, so forgive me. I will be reading. As you may recall, when I presented to you last November, the council was supportive of making Mill Valley a more age and disability-friendly community. Since then, we formed an advisory group with council member Caroline Joakim, and serving as our council's liaison, and we have met regularly to discuss the steps we need to take to make Mill Valley age and disability-friendly, as Marin County and most of the cities in Marin County have already done. Our advisory group, which is calling our program Live Well Mill Valley, is made up of volunteers, some of whom are here tonight, and if you are, please wait when I say your name. Leah Curtis, Luke Hamm, I don't know if Luke made it over, Marla Hastings, Janet Hines, who is the president, there she is, of the Board of Directors here, Lisa Irving, Maureen Parton, Michelle Terrell, who is the city's community engagement liaison, and of course, council member Caroline Joakim, and myself. I want to give a special thanks to Caroline and Michelle for really putting this presentation together. Now, we would like to provide an update about our efforts and recommend to the council a plan going forward. Mill Valley, as with the rest of Marin County, California, and the world for that matter, is ongoing unprecedented population change. We're aging, and our numbers are growing rapidly. We are living longer, and many of us wish to remain in the homes and community we've known throughout our lives. With that in mind, the need for services for all of us will also increase in the coming years. Mill Valley must have a plan for older adults and those with disabilities so that we can live comfortably, independently, and with dignity throughout our lives. That's why we call the program Live Well Mill Valley. Addressing these changes requires a plan. Over the last seven months, the Mill Valley, Live Well Mill Valley Advisory Group has been meeting to discuss what we can do to move our program forward. We have been collecting information and research, and have talked with representatives from other age-friendly groups in Marin, including with Sarah Robinson, so some of you may know, who guided the county's Age Forward Program, and who has given us tremendous advice as we build our own. We also have met with other organizations, the Marin Center for Independent Living, and the Marin Aging and Disability Institute. Here are some of the things we've learned. Demographic data for Mill Valley indicates that residents over 65 years old continue to represent a growing segment of our community, and those over 85 years old are the fastest-growing segment of our population and are projected to increase. Marin County's Area Aging, Agency on Aging, I've been singing too much, sorry, which is part of Health and Human Services, conducted a needs assessment study recently. The findings in that assessment revealed circumstances which need noting. One in four older adults in Marin are struggling with financial insecurity. That means 25% of older adults are making daily decisions between paying for rent, utilities, medications, food, and other necessities. One in three adults in Marin are socially isolated, and those who are low-income are twice as likely to be socially isolated. As you know, social isolation is considered a public health crisis. In the U.S., one in four older adults experience a fall every year. In Marin County, it's one in three, and many of us know the personal impact of these statistics. My husband, Tom, might be watching. Persons over the age of 60 currently comprise 30% of the total population in Marin compared to 20% statewide. This percentage will increase to almost 40% by 2040. Just within the last few months, there has been a tremendous amount of attention and information concerning our older adults in our communities and throughout the country, I think you may have noticed. There is a sense of urgency of cities, for cities in Marin County to recognize and tackle these issues. So, we have an ongoing call to action. We know that the city of Mill Valley already addresses many of these issues. For instance, the city continues to offer programs and classes through Parks and Recs, and there are different events and educational workshops at the library, such as dementia and adapting your home to be age-friendly. Last year, our police department, and I want to shout out to Rick Navarro, took the lead on organizing an elder fraud summit that was presented by several organizations, agencies, and dignitaries from around the county, and it was well-attended by the public. The information offered was tremendously important. Some of it will be up on our website soon, as Michelle is working on that. I really recommend you take a look at it. I think it's critical to know what's going on. But we need to do more in a more focused and concerted way. Mill Valley needs a plan to address the changes in our demographics to make sure that we are providing the services needed by our community. Live Well Mill Valley is the way to do it. With this initiative, we can address the challenges our residents face in a positive way, and improve not only the lives of older people, of our older population, but enhance the quality of life for everyone. After taking the initial steps with our advisory group, council member Caroline Joakim capped off our effort by submitting the city of Mill Valley's application to AARP to become a member of the Age Friendly Cities and Communities Network. That application was approved May 3, 2024. With that, our work has officially begun. So, what is an age and disability-friendly community? It really kind of rolls off the tongue. Here's how AARP describes it. It's a community that is safe and secure, has affordable and appropriate housing and transportation options, and has supportive community features and services. Once in place, those resources enhance personal independence, allow residents to age in place, if that's their choice, and foster every resident's engagement in the community's civic, economic, and social life. This means we have inclusive community services, accessible infrastructure, and supportive policies. It matters because it addresses demographic shifts of our community, such as the aging population, and allows us to keep up with those changes. It fulfills Mill Valley's obligation to provide needed services to all of our community members. It creates a community that fosters connections and opportunities for everyone to participate, no matter what stage of life they're at. The AARP Network of Age Friendly Communities is the U.S. affiliate of the World Health Organization Age Friendly Cities and Communities Program that was launched in 2006 to help cities prepare for their own growing populations of older adults around the world, and this really is an issue that affects many, many different countries. Today, AARP has more than 350 communities nationwide that are members of the network. The AARP, through their livability, livable communities program, identified different domains of livability which provide a framework that defines an age-friendly community. And I hope all of you can just sort of take a look at the graphic up here, and you can see what some of those domains are. While they largely cater to older adults, the similarities between those needs supporting support the idea for people of all ages and abilities to live well in Mill Valley. As noted in this slide, those are the nine different domains. And I know domain sounds like URLs, but it's basically the areas we need to focus on. In coordination with AARP, we have also developed a timeline for the creation of an age and disability-friendly Mill Valley. Typically, this process takes five years, but it will take us a little bit less, given that there are many things already in place. We have identified milestones that will be achieved each year. The Live Well Mill Valley Advisory Group will provide periodic updates and reports on our progress as we go forward, both to the council and to all of you. For the end of 2024, we have three goals. Number one, create an inventory of community assets, which means identifying and reviewing existing services and conditions, understanding their limitations as well as opportunities so we can begin to recognize the future needs of our community in terms of new infrastructure or services for our residents. Two, we will create and conduct a community-wide survey to identify local concerns about aging and living with disabilities. The survey will help identify local demographics, as well as residents' needs and ideas for projects that will help make us more responsive. We have already created a survey, many thanks to Michelle, and it will be distributed in the coming weeks. AARP will be assisting with the data analytics at no cost to us, which is great. The survey will be made available both online and in hard copy, so we can reach as many people as possible. We look forward to partnering with city and local organizations and businesses throughout our community that serve all of us. This will widen the reach of the survey. From our survey results, we will host several listening sessions, sometimes known as focus groups, which will enable us to do a deeper dive and learn more about what the community's needs are, what they're thinking about, what everyone here is thinking about, so we can strengthen and define those specific areas. By the end of 2025, we will have created our action plan. It will be presented to the city council and submitted to the AARP. During '26 and '27, we will implement the action plan and bring it to life. It will serve as a guiding document that will direct our needs, goals, objectives, and specific recommendations for areas such as housing, transportation, engagement, and services. The action plan provides a base for decision-makers to act on the findings of the assessment and make sure we are indeed living well in Mill Valley, and I'm sure they will be singing about that as we go along. In 2028, we will submit a progress report to AARP. This will mark the end of the official process of becoming age and disability-friendly, and we will then have the option to either continue it with our action plan or design a new one that may fit the needs that have come up the most recently. There are many ways to get involved. Some people have asked me about that. To make Live Well Mill Valley really work, we need the input and ideas from everyone in the community, from all of you. Maybe you'd like to get involved with housing issues, or you have ideas for multi-generational programs, or ideas addressing health and nutrition. Together, we'll find ways to serve everyone here. We aim to establish community partnerships with the city departments, Chamber of Commerce, Marin Villages, the Redwoods, faith-based and nonprofit organizations, and other programs providing services to our residents. You can learn more at the Live Well Mill Valley webpage, which will be at cityofmillvalley.org. Please participate in the Community Needs Assessment Survey, and encourage your friends, your family, your neighbors, to do the same. We need to learn what everyone has to say about these issues so we can actively work on them. We really, really need your input. You can also become part of the Live Well Mill Valley team. You can join some of the listening sessions or focus groups. I think those will be fascinating because I think learning the stories of people and what they're talking about is just totally critical. And finally, a quote from the World Health Organization, which is spearheading these efforts across the globe, and I've kind of tailored them a little bit to fit what we're doing. "Our physical and social environments are major influences on how we experience aging and the opportunities it brings. Creating age and disability-friendly environments enables all people to live well in a place that is right for them. It allows us to continue to develop personally, to be included, and to contribute to our communities. It allows all of us, no matter what age or ability we are, to be independent, healthy, and to continue our lives with purpose." Thank you.
Hey, Kristi, don't run away. You're going to, yeah, I know, you're not leaving yet. So, as this is, this is a topic which is, I'm sure, of great interest to the residents here. We thought we'd just move directly to your questions and your comments, and Kristi is eager to answer them, as well as Caroline, who's been heavily involved in this. So, Hannah has got a microphone. Just raise your hand, and she will get you the microphone, and you'll be able to ask your question.
And before we start with the questionings, I just wanted to say a big thank you to Danny Greenlee of our library, who came up with this logo for us.
That's awesome. Yeah. Okay. Anybody got questions? There you go. There's your first one.
This way. Thank you. Thank you, Mill Valley City Council, for coming to the Redwoods. We are really grateful. It's not easy for us to hike up to downtown, so thanks for coming. My question is, is it possible to do something about reopening the Alto Tunnel? It's the old railway tunnel from Mill Valley to Corder Madera. It's half a mile long, and the train used to come through there over to Sausalito, up to Mill Valley. It's been closed and cement dumped into it, but that's not so hard to remove with those big bulldozers. And it shouldn't be too expensive either, because as far as I understand it, it doesn't need reinforcement, in spite of what the guy says up on top of the tunnel, that it will interfere with his housing, and he will collapse down into the tunnel. He's only lived up there about 10 years, so he doesn't really know a lot.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your question. So, we will answer that question when we get to the public open time section of the meeting. I'm asking whether you got questions specifically for Kristi and the aging initiative? No, no, no. That's great.
I thought it was fascinating. It's okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's fascinating. Kristi, you're welcome to answer that question if you like.
I do have some of my biking friends here.
But are there questions specifically about the aging initiative, about Live Well in Mill Valley? Thank you. We will answer that question for you.
I'm wondering how the survey will be conducted. Will you bring copies to the Redwoods?
There will be hard copies here and at the community center, at the library, and we will also be reaching out.
And we will also be reaching out digitally to different people.
Any other questions for Kristi while she's here? Yes. Specifically about aging in Mill Valley.
Thank you for coming. Before I became an old lady myself, I heard a lot about the Buck Foundation. I have not heard a word in the last, say, six or seven years before I moved in here. Are they involved in any kind of enterprise like this? Do they make donations? Are they, are they helpful in any way? Because I understand they've got loads of dough.
Lots of U bikes. You know, to be honest, I don't really know. I know that they're doing a lot of research. They are not directly involved, from my knowledge, with the Age Friendly Program. But they may make us all younger and have better memories, we hope.
Other questions for Kristi? Oh, there you go, in the back.
I just want to congratulate all of you for taking advantage of the AARP program. And it's very, very, very comforting for me to realize that this is worldwide. This is very exciting for me, as an older person, to realize that we are being focused on in this very specific and helpful way. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I think one thing that benefits all of us is being able to use not only the rest of Marin County, but the rest of the country as a resource. It's terrific.
Any other questions? Oh, there you go.
I was wondering what effort you're making to engage older people in the planning process that you're talking about. I'm in a study for people over 90 with Davis, and all of the staff is young. And I want to ask about where are the older people who are talking, you're talking about? They say that we have one on our advisory committee. Aging is a fact, and being old is an attitude. And I think that, I'm just suggesting that an effort be made in some unique way to engage the elderly in the planning process, either through information groups. I don't know. Could you comment on that?
No, I think it's a very wise and good idea. I think we're, that's why we are reaching out to everyone here and other people within the community to make it a stronger plan so that it impacts everybody. And I totally agree, it is for all ages. We do have a number of us that may not be in our 90s, but we would welcome that participation, and, and we'd love to hear from you. I think probably Michelle could tell us the best way, but probably through the website is a good way to reach out to us. And you can always reach out to me through the Commission on Aging.
If you're 80 and over, you're not familiar with websites.
Okay.
That's one of, one of our problems here, is that, you know, lots of information are on websites, but a lot of us are not tech-oriented. That's not part of our life.
I understand. And, and that's one of the reasons we're going to be doing hard copy on the survey. And honestly, feel free to write us a letter if that is the best way for you to communicate or call. And let us hear your ideas. That's important to know your, your ideas, too.
I think writing a letter to the elderly in Mill Valley would be helpful.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you for your question. Anybody else? We have a lot of things to talk about here tonight, so there'll be plenty of opportunity to speak. Thank you very much for your questions. So our next topic actually relates very closely--
I had a question. I thought we were going to go down the line.
I thought that we would kind of, for that particular topic, because-- but go ahead, Max, if you got something.
Oh, I was just going to suggest to Kristi, just a suggestion.
Yeah, I know. You keep trying, right?
I was just going to suggest, maybe you have thought of this already, but since AARP is the lead and has many members in Mill Valley, maybe one idea to get the survey out, right? And, and reach out to folks is to see if they'd be open to sharing something through their newsletter or sharing with you contacts in their organization in Mill Valley specifically.
That's a good idea, and Michelle has been directly involved with them. Do you want to add anything to that, Michelle?
I'm meeting with their research team very soon, and I'll ask any local resources and communities to connect very directly.
Michelle said she's been reaching out to the, she's been in direct contact with their research team, and she can reach out to them for more of that type of information.
Makes sense. Great. Okay. So, item two on our agenda actually is related to the first item. One of the things that Kristi mentioned in her presentation is that providing affordable housing is really important for our aging community. Secondly, that many people, in fact, about a third of our population, are socially isolated. So I'm very happy to introduce our next two speakers because they are working on a solution to address both of those, both of those issues for the aging. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the Vice Mayor, who is going to introduce our next speakers.
Thank you very much. I'm very pleased tonight that we're joined by two people who are helping to shape a very innovative and successful approach to workforce housing in our community. The first is Luke Barnesmore, who represents Front Porch Home Match, a program that the city of Mill Valley has supported, I think we were the first in Marin to support over the last five years or so. Luke is also a Mill Valley resident, Tam High, class of 2010, and Renaissance man who has done a lot of great work, both around housing, and more recently, you may have read his op-ed in the Marin IJ about housing insecurity for the elderly in our county and things that need to be done. He also helped inform the grand jury on that topic. So Luke will speak first about Front Porch and Home Match, and then Charlie Wilmot, who is one of the founding board members of the Community Housing Foundation of Mill Valley, will speak about their efforts to help promote this idea of housing our workforce, housing it often in conjunction with elderly residents. There's over 700 elderly residents in Mill Valley who live in their homes, either alone or with maybe one family member. And one of our goals tonight is to invite the Redwoods community to activate your networks, not digitally or online, but through word of mouth about both the Home Match program and the Community Housing Foundation and its goals. So with that, I'd like to invite Luke up first and then Charlie.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. My name is Luke Barnesmore. I'm the Director of Strategy with Front Porch's Home Match Program. So I'll tell you a little bit about Front Porch, a little bit about the Home Match Program, and I hand it over to Charlie to talk about our rent subsidy program. So Front Porch, it's a 50-plus-year nonprofit that provides housing and services for older people in the community. We're in 19 life-plan communities like the Redwoods, 34 affordable housing communities. We have a number of satellite divisions in the organization. We have one, the Center for Innovation and Well-Being, that develops technology for senior living facilities. We also have our Community Services Division, which runs a number of programs that deliver services in areas that are having an outsized impact on older people in the community. So we have some social connections programs to address that social isolation pandemic. We have some food and nutrition programs, creative aging programs, and then Home Match, which is our housing program. So the basic structure of the program, work with mostly older people, but anyone over the age of 18 who have an extra room in their home or apartment or an accessory dwelling unit on their property, and help them through the process of connecting and living with somebody in the community that's looking for a more affordable housing option. So our home providers' average age is about 70, typically living at home alone. And there are two major motivating factors that bring folks to the program on that front. One is the social connections side, as Mayor Carmel mentioned. A lot of folks living at home alone, just having somebody living around the house, somebody to have coffee with in the morning. Or they'll be asked to do a task exchange, where you can get 10 hours a week of support with things like bringing out the trash or bringing in the groceries in exchange for reduced rent. And then the other side really is the financial side. We have a lot of folks these days that are struggling to hold on. Social Security is not growing with the cost of living, and so many of the folks joining the program really just need to increase their income through renting out that extra room or the ADU on their property. I'll say here in Mill Valley, we have seen a third motivating factor that's really exciting, which is something more of a philanthropic desire. Folks that want to help to contribute to the community. They have an accessory dwelling unit on their property. Maybe they've been using it as a short-term rental. Maybe it's been a place to have an at-home office, but they know someone at a local business, maybe a local teacher, maybe someone that works in a local restaurant, really struggling to be able to afford housing here in Mill Valley. And they'll make that ADU accessible through our workforce subsidy program to make it so that somebody else who serves our community and makes it possible can actually work and live here at the same time. So just the quick overview of the structure of our program. We meet with folks in the home. There's a little bit of work that needs to be done to get the room or the ADU ready to go. Maybe some cleaning, maybe some stuff that needs to go to storage. We'll support with that. And then we really want to focus on getting to know our home provider. Social compatibility, be it an ADU on the property or a room in the home. Two folks need to get along, shared communication style, lifestyle preferences, values. Spend a good deal of time getting to know who a home provider might want to live with. Then we'll list the room. We'll receive applications from folks looking for housing. We have a similar vetting process with folks that are looking for housing, so it's not only a background check and income verification, but also at least one in-depth interview to really get to know who the person is. And then we start the matchmaking process, and at some level, we are matchmakers. So we'll introduce folks, not make placements. So when we do identify two people that'd be a good fit, we'll give each other phone numbers. They'll have a phone call. If that goes well, we encourage folks to meet in person, see the room, but also share a meal together, slow the process down, make sure they're going to appreciate each other's company. If folks want to move in together, we then help to facilitate a living-together agreement. It's a pretty comprehensive document. We have questions about shared use of space, guest policies, cleaning policies. It's a little bit different if there's an accessory dwelling unit and you're not, say, sharing the kitchen space together. But in any case, it's about 14 pages of questions. So we get all those expectations on the table before folks move in. People sign the agreement, they move in, and then we provide ongoing support throughout the match. So maybe there's an appliance that breaks and it's causing a little bit of friction. We can get in there and help get that appliance fixed and remove whatever that underlying stressor is. And then, when a match comes to the end, we help both parties into another housing situation that's going to work for them. So for providers, that's typically finding a new tenant because they need to sustain the income or the social connection. For our home seekers, that might look like being rematched in the program, helping to navigate to other housing that's available. We'll also do things like maybe support with the moving costs if someone's struggling a little bit with savings and doesn't have money for the next security deposit. But in any case, we do problem-solving just to make sure that folks aren't just finding housing stability in our program, but also on the way out. That is the high level. I'm happy to answer questions afterwards, but I think it'd be helpful to pass it over to Charlie, and he can tell you a little bit about the workforce subsidy program. Thank you.
Hi there. I'm Charlie Wilmot, and I'm a Mill Valley resident. I live over by the golf course, so I've lived here now 25 years. I've raised our three kids here, too. So our program, it's Community Housing Foundation of Mill Valley. The primary focus is to help people who work in Mill Valley be able to affordably live in Mill Valley. So I'm sure, you know, many of you interact with different people here that are employees or people at some of the stores or in other places, that they are great people in our community, but they can't necessarily afford to live here. So the cost of living has gone up so much in terms of rent or housing, and they're either driving, you know, quite a long distance and bearing a very large commute, or some of those folks decide that that isn't a valid option, and they don't continue to work in Mill Valley, or they may not decide to work in Mill Valley, and they would be great people to have here. So our organization, as we came up with this idea of how can we help deal with that issue, and a very hopefully simple factor is we provide a rental subsidy to someone that works in Mill Valley and lives or wants to live in Mill Valley. And so the average rent probably would, in Mill Valley, is $2,500 to $3,000 a month for a one-bedroom apartment. To afford that and have your rent be less than 30% of your income, you'd have to earn approximately $50 an hour, which is very tough to do at a place like Whole Foods or necessarily employee at Redwoods or somebody over at Tam. So our goal is to say, how can we help keep their rent at or below 30% of their income so they have enough money to cover all the other things they need to do? So our program is, provides a subsidy of up to $1,000 a month to people whose income are at or below 60% of the average income in Mill Valley, and to keep their expenses below that 30%. So they'll get up to $1,000 a month. The commitment is to, for at least a year, our intent is to do it for at least two years of how we budget it. So as we've started out, we worked together with Home Match and Front Porch, and we've provided the money for those grants. We had a nice start with a whole group of people that are residents in the Scott Highlands area, which is over by the golf course, who started the initial funding. And we had pledges, and most of which has been funded, of $400,000, which was a nice start. We'd love to add another zero to that to keep it going. But we've had matches with people like a Tam High employee, Whole Foods employee, somebody that worked at Super Duper, a small business person, all of which have been able to afford to live or continue to live in Mill Valley from the rental subsidy they have. One thing that came up at a conversation Luke and I did with Hunter Moore here at the Redwoods, and he mentioned an employee here who had an apartment and a accessory dwelling unit, which is a, you know, might be a small individual standalone apartment that somebody has that has a small kitchen and bathroom, a regular bathroom and everything. And this employee here had a very nice situation, but then the person that owned that property sold it. She could no longer live there, and now she's commuting to Sonoma County. So it went from being able to walk to work to spending more than an hour in the car trying to get here. So our whole goal is to try to reduce the number of people that have to do that. So they get that subsidy, as long as they qualify in terms of the income standpoint, and they continue to work in Mill Valley, they'll continue to get that subsidy of up to $1,000 a month. So that's, in essence, it is try to make sure that people work here, can afford to live here, too. So that's, that's it.
Great. Thank you, Charlie, and thank you, Luke. Okay, residents, what questions have you got about Home Match and about the Housing Foundation for our two speakers? Raise your hands if you got a question. Oh, Luke has got a question. All right.
I don't have a question, but I will just add that at this point, we have a good number of people who have expressed interest in accessing the subsidy program and not enough accessory dwelling units here in town to meet that need. So I would say the biggest need that we have is folks who want to be a part of this solution and help to house somebody who works maybe at the school or at a local coffee shop.
Yeah, I would just add to that is, you know, we've had particular people saying, we would love to have somebody rent from us that works in Mill Valley, and they do have that community commitment. But they do need the income that was touched on earlier in terms of seniors and enough people that need the income to help support what they might be getting from Social Security and things. So that definitely is a case that somebody can then get the rent, you know, from the tenant, plus what they're getting from the program, get what they would in terms of market rent, but be able to also help the community. So if you do know anyone that says, hey, I have an extra space or an accessible dwelling unit, or I no longer want those in-laws to stay in that ADU anymore, and, you know, we fill it up so they don't, they have to stay someplace else. We'd love to hear about it and help those people out to be able to be part of the program.
There we go. We got a question right here. Thank you.
I'm wondering if you have checked with the teachers who work here in Mill Valley and also members of the police force and also the fire departments? Because they also are traveling for great distances, and many of them are in campers for a week, and then they go home over to Highway 99 or wherever, Modesto, for the weekend. And I do believe that we should be concerned about those people. They're not old people, but they're nevertheless people who help support our community totally.
Right. Yeah, definitely that's the case. And we have done outreach to the Mill Valley School District. So it's, we do have one, one of the people that have participated in the program in terms of a tenant was, is an employee over at Tam High, one of the people on the staff, not a teacher. Well, we started, yeah, we started this program late last year. Yeah, so it just started where we were actually-- Yeah, so it just started where we were actually, so this has been a, uh, the first initial ones were last year. Um, but we would love to get more of those. My wife actually works over at Strawberry Elementary, so, uh, if we could get more, I'm, I'm encouraging her, uh, encouraging to try to get more people that would take advantage.
You need the housing first.
Right, that's exactly right. So it's kind of a chicken or egg. If we don't have enough housing, we, we don't have enough people. There's, I could put out a sign on, um, in front of the depot, you know, that on a Friday and by like Saturday morning, there would be all kinds of people that'd say, hey, I'll take a $1,000 a month subsidy. What we do need, we do have the month funds to do subsidies, but in our group, it's about 15 of those. Um, so we'd like to look at some other sources of funding, which we've talked about together with the city council. But a definite bottleneck is having enough people that would say, hey, I would be happy to have a person rent and firefighters and teacher, excuse me, firefighters and police officers would also be eligible. We do have the income limit of 60, you know, the cap of 60% of the median income to try to reach that group first. So, but certainly teachers and school staff fall into that category, um, right away.
I appreciate very much your group.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much.
How you're doing as far as the funding?
Thank you. Yeah, we're, we're getting there. We had to get people's, uh, involvement real quickly, which was good and then they got some nice commitments. Thanks.
Other questions? Oh, right here, Naima.
Good afternoon, council and, um, Charles, was that the name?
Yep.
Okay, um, so I am Luke. Um, I had, um, I'm kind of interested in how racial diversity ties into this effort. If I recall correctly, this funding that you represent specifically evolved out of the DEI Task Force efforts and some things that happened a couple of years back and some push to racially diversify Mill Valley. Um, looking around, I can see at the Redwoods that there's limitations to how many people of color are actually living here. If I go to Tam High, what percentage of the staff are people of color that are seeking housing in Mill Valley? Um, if I recall correctly, the Scott Highlands area was actually up for, um, housing and the community fought against it. If I remember correctly, the standing mayor was one of the first people to donate to this fund that you're talking about, if I'm thinking of the right fund. Um, and so, and, and of late, we've had a lot of different problems in our community because we are lacking, um, in racial diversity. Um, and then in addition to that, um, folks don't necessarily always want to live in a roommate type of situation. They want to live in like the Joneses, like those that are more affluent in the community or whatnot. So, um, how are you tying this all together? Cause that actually is really important to me.
Sure, sure. Um, Luke, you want to cover some of that? Yep.
All right, thank you so much for your question. I really appreciate it. Um, so to your first question, because we receive federal funding, we're not allowed to make introductions with race as a component, but what we see in the data is that of folks working in the city of Mill Valley who make 60% of AMI or less, many, many folks who are people of color in that demographic and just anecdotally through the matches that we've made so far, I would say the majority of the home seekers who have been able to access funding through this program have been people of color. Um, so fair housing law is fair housing law and for us to keep operating, we can't really step over that boundary and it's, and this is probably a question for the Supreme Court and I wouldn't want to bring it to the present Supreme Court. But, but I would say that by the nature of the interrelationship between wealth inequality and racial inequality in this country and in this community in particular, um, we are definitely able to do that work to the best, um, that we can within legal parameters. Thank you for the question.
Yeah, and just to that, I mean, we, we've had the funding, just a quick clarification. So it was for Scott Highlands, it wasn't to put affordable housing over there. It was to sell, um, part of the, um, community park to raise funds for affordable housing. So it wasn't where the community said, hey, we don't want to have affordable housing there. It was really to sell the property. Um, but I think to Luke's point, while it can't be, um, defined where you discriminate in, in either event, but it, we would welcome ideas on additional outreach, uh, because part of that is how do you perhaps outreach more to communities of color so they are aware of these programs?
Other questions?
Say that I appreciate the efforts. I didn't say that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Great, thanks very much.
I will work with, oh, I'm sorry, there's a question. Go ahead.
I'm sure that I'm hidden behind the twelve people. I'd like to know the process by which you, uh, identify available housing. Do you have a census of single, uh, homeowners who have a big house, uh, that you can actually approach directly to see if they'd be interested? How do you go about finding these places?
That I'll throw back to Luke.
Thank you for the question. Um, so we, we have a few different ways that we work to reach home providers. First and foremost, it's been most successful is every door direct mail. Um, so on maybe a semi-annual basis, we'll send a postcard to every home in town. Um, that's been really effective for connecting with folks, do a lot of in-person outreach. So we spend time at maybe the, um, the Earth Day Festival over here at the community center or something like that, so that we can have direct conversations with folks in town. And then across all the counties that we work in, word of mouth remains the best way that the program spreads. Um, so making sure that we deliver the best experience possible to the folks that are in the program is a really effective way than helping them to tell their story to other folks in the community. Um, and maybe you know someone in the neighborhood who knows about the program, who might want to look into it after detail. Thank you.
My name is Marilyn Herndon. I lived over at Mill Creek Meadows and, uh, the housing right next door to us here, I thought was subsidized housing for Mill Valley employees. Is that not true? Pickleweed?
Uh, Pickleweed is run by Bridge. I think it's affordable housing for the community. It's not specific to workforce. It's, um, that project dates back to the eighties and that's when it was built and set up. Yeah. But it's not specific to workforce.
But it is subsidized, right?
It is, yeah. No, so we have three existing 100% affordable developments in Mill Valley. There's Shelter Hill, uh, which is the largest, that was built in the mid 1970s. Then we have Pickleweed from the 1980s. And then we've got Alto Station, um, which is off of East Blythdale, which was, uh, 30 years ago. So that was built in the mid 1990s. Those are the three that we have. And in 2027 or so, we'll be able to say we've got four. And the fourth one will be one of the largest ones that we've got in Mill Valley.
Well, that's pretty good for Marin County.
Yeah, well, it's great for Mill Valley. Um, we are strong believers in the city in creating affordable housing and we've been advocates for affordable housing and we believe in doing what we say and that's why we're doing it. And I can just say that we are very fortunate, uh, for the work that Luke is doing and for the work that Charlie is doing. Charlie is a resident of Mill Valley. He's a volunteer and to his great credit, he saw a need and he took the initiative and he's created something which I think is one of the most exciting things which is going on in Mill Valley. And my hats off to him because it's a lot of work to get something like that started. It's hard to raise funds to do something like that is, is really heroic work. So thank you Charlie for all the work that you've done.
Thanks, thanks.
I think the vice mayor's got some comments and then, then we'll go to the vice mayor.
I'm a retired clergyman, served all over the country. And, uh, my experience from 40 years in ministry is that there's a great many older people that keep waiting until basically they have some kind of health collapse. And then they really have to move, but families could really help older people make this decision much earlier and it would be much better for all involved. And so I think, I thank you very much for what you're doing. I think these programs are excellent and I'm delighted and I think many people here at the Redwoods are delighted that you're supporting affordable housing. I think one thing you might want to try to do is look at co-housing. That's the idea of taking existing housing and turning it in a way that, uh, actually becomes a kind of community house for a group of older people, usually with a young couple or a young, uh, adult that, uh, provides support and lives in the house. Uh, that's something that, uh, congregations have done in some cases. But I think in Mill Valley, there's so many places partly because of the up and down nature of so much of Mill Valley, that it's very difficult if a single person is living in a house and basically they can't get out. And so I think that's a place where co-housing could really be helpful and I think that's something perhaps the kind of programs you're doing could be, uh, broadened in that way. Thank you very much for what you're doing.
Yeah, thanks for your comments. Very good. Any other, oh, vice mayor.
So I will work with staff here at the Redwoods to, uh, bring some materials for your community bulletin board and other places if, so you have the postcards and other information on these programs. And hopefully you can help us, uh, solve or partially solve the challenge of identifying more, uh, locations where we can place these worthy people and leverage this worthy program. So thank you all very much.
Very good. Thank you again, both, for all your work. Okay, I'm going to invite Tammy Herndon, David Dubin, Molly Given, uh, to come on up. Uh, we're going to talk about two things now. We're going to talk about Pride. Uh, we finished Pride Month in June and we're going to talk about, um, about Juneteenth and the work that happened in the city of Mill Valley surrounding the Juneteenth, um, holiday. And we'll combine these two items and any questions you've got after these two, we'll be happy to take them.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming tonight. Uh, tonight, my name is David Dubin. I'm a management analyst, excuse me, with the city of Mill Valley Arts and Recreation Department.
Good evening, I'm Molly Given. I'm the Community Services Supervisor with the City of Mill Valley Recreation Department.
Could you speak to all of us?
Oh, yes.
I'm Tammy Herndon and I'm a management analyst, uh, for diversity, equity and inclusion.
Thank you. So tonight we are going to give you a event recap of our Pride Mill Valley event that took place in June. And we're going to give some special recognition to our steering committee who helped the whole thing come together.
Um, so we celebrated Pride all month long in June. We hosted nine events throughout the city. Um, the lumberyard, we had a kickoff event on June 1st at the Depot Plaza. We did two movie nights at the community center and, and the library also hosted some events, um, at the library as well. We had a flag raising ceremony and we hung the flag here at Litton Square as well as the Mill Valley Community Center. I see you guys have a couple of Pride flags here at the Redwoods. That was really exciting to see when we came, um, when David and I walked here this evening. And then we also had several businesses that showed up and displayed decals on their windows and also supported different special, um, a signature drink or a signature dessert throughout the month at their local restaurants as well.
All right, moving right along. So we had a pretty incredible event that kicked off our whole Pride Month celebration. It was our Pride Mill Valley kickoff event. Like Molly said, we had a flag raising ceremony to kick it off. We had a lot of participation from city government, city, uh, departments, uh, local vendors and community partners. Uh, we had three city departments, 14 vendors and six community resource partners helping us out. And I know that we have some of those people in the audience tonight. So if you're here, if you're a vendor, if you're a part of the committee, or if you're a resource partner, feel free to stand up or wave. It was really great. There's one over there. There's the one in the back. Naima, thank you for participating, Rochelle. Uh, it was really fun. It was really amazing. Um, we had some great music. We had live music. We have a DJ. We had some great drag performances. We had a fashion show by Vintage Ruse and our whole event was emceed by this really amazing, really fun guy named Richard Moscata. And while, whoops, while you are enjoying some of these lovely event photos, I would just like to say that, uh, on a personal note, being a resident of Marin County and also a member of the LGBTQ community, it was really exciting to see this event happen in our town and I hope that we can continue to improve, make it bigger and celebrate even more in years to come. Now, we'd also like to thank our steering committee who helped make the whole thing possible. We had, obviously people from Arts and Recreation, myself, Molly. Uh, we had help from the Mill Valley Library, also support from City Hall, uh, lots of people, uh, Police Department, everything like that. Uh, we had Chamber of Commerce support and also, uh, people from the lumberyard, a few people from Mountain Play, uh, Jennifer Nasiri, Jules Mercer from Vintage Ruse. We just want to thank everybody for all you did. Um, and I'm going to pass it off to Tammy to read a quote from one of our members.
Okay. Good evening. Um, I'll start by reading a quote from my friend Jen Nasiri, who could not be here this evening. And Jen, um, is a parent in the Mill Valley School District and we've done a lot of volunteering together and, uh, she worked on this particular event and also led the Pride events in the Mill Valley School District that we did last year, which I'm going to share some history on in just a minute. Um, this is her quote she wanted me to share. "My motivation in gathering, organizing and participating in Pride events is to show up for the young people who need, want and deserve queer representation. I strive to be the role model I never had." And with that, I will just share a little bit of the history on how we came to celebrating Pride in Mill Valley. In 2023, the Mill Valley School District PTA DEI Committees approached the city to co-host a Pride event in May of that year. Myself, along with parent volunteer Jennifer Nasiri, worked with city staff to create this first ever event for the school district. At the same time, city staff also worked on creating a proclamation to hang the Pride flag in the month of June annually in Mill Valley. After the 22, 2023 Pride event, city employees with the community engagement team, members including PD, Recreation, City Hall and Library, wanted to continue to support our queer community by hosting a Pride event in June of 2024. Planning began last January, when a steering committee was formed to create Mill Valley's first annual Pride event. Having spent the last couple of years putting on DEI events in our Mill Valley School District, I know how big of an effort it is. Creating these events on this scale requires a lot. From planning, setting up and breaking down, it is no small task. So a big thank you to our team at Parks and Recreation, our team at the library and to everyone who participated and volunteered. Thanks for having me on the team as well. And, um, I just wanted to share on a personal, just for me, having grown up here in Mill Valley, I often think about what it would have been like to have things be different back then. I think about my friend who I wish was here today to see the student clubs in our schools and the programming and events Mill Valley supports. I think he would have been proud. While we are a work in progress, I hope we can take these moments to feel gratitude for the steps we are taking and the path we are setting for the next generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you all for listening to our, um, presentation on Pride. Um, the group got together in January and I had this nice, long agenda and all these different things and one item on the agenda was budget. We didn't have one. We're like, how are we going to do this? What are we going to do? So the library came together, the recreation department came together and we took budget money from other events and different things on our line. money from other events and different things on our line items. And the event was able to be produced for a little over $5,000 with the performers, with the marketing and outreach and everything. So thank you, City Council, for supporting the event and we hope to have more in the future. Are there any questions?
If you don't mind, why don't we, you know, move on to Juneteenth and then we'll do questions for both items at the same time, if that makes sense?
Perfect.
Yeah.
Okay, that moves me on to our next presentation. Along with Pride, this event could not have been put together without this amazing steering committee that we had and the support. So thank you, everyone. Sasha is here today from MV Free. Naima is one of our vendors as well. So this year, I don't, oh, sorry. I'm used to someone doing this for me. I apologize. Thanks, David. We celebrated this year, this is our third year hosting the Juneteenth event. The past two years, in 2022 and 2023, we hosted it at the Depot Plaza. This year, we hosted it at Tam High School in conjunction with a basketball tournament with over 60 kids, third through eighth grade registered. It was a three-by-three basketball tournament. We also had the community center as well as the library were part of the group. We had nine vendors and three community partners participated in the interactive booths. We worked with an organization called Hip Hop for Change to contract our entertainment. We've worked with them for the last three years. They are amazing with curating. This year was really exciting. We actually had performing stars out of Marin City who had a group of their young performers come out, as well as Amber Lee Persons, who was born and raised here in Mill Valley, as well as a close friend of Naima and Tammy's. She was one of our presenters, which was really exciting to have more local talent. Okay, so here's some fun photos. The hip hop, we have some break dancers, we had live music, we had dancers, we had all kinds of fun, amazing things. On the corner over there, you can see some of our vendors that were laid out outside of the gym at Tam High School. Just wanted to thank the steering committee for putting this together. This event, kind of like Pride, we don't have a budget for either, but we came together and this event cost a little over $6,000 to produce. MV Free sponsored and put together the basketball tournament, as well as the purchase of T-shirts for all the 60 participants. We would love to continue to do more events. It's really important, kind of looking at our future and what's happening around us, to be able to put together these events. So we are hopeful that in the future that we can have some line items for these amazing events and maybe more. That concludes my presentation. Now I'd like to open the floor for questions.
There we go. Yeah, so questions about Pride and about Juneteenth? Go ahead and raise your hands. Anybody in the audience? Well, Naima and the gentleman over there.
Not really a question, just a statement. I just want to say thank you. I appreciate all the hard work that was put into both of these events and participating was like a wonderful opportunity and something that I hadn't experienced growing up here. I'm pleased to see the city of Mill Valley taking steps or making moves, for lack of, I don't know, toward creating a sense of belonging and embracing others. It seems almost asinine that we have, that we're only just doing this now when we look at Stonewall that happened in 1969 and we look at the civil rights movement and we look at, I mean, Juneteenth, that goes way, way back and we're only just acknowledging it in our nation over the past couple of years. So I just do want to give accolades to the city for doing the work, for creating steering committees and getting the community involved and bringing awareness to, to those that are not always recognized. And so, thank you. And keep the funding coming.
I think, yeah, another question over there.
I moved here in 1967 and for 20 years I counted Mill Valley as my home, although I didn't live, I lived in the county, so I couldn't vote. And I see, I've just moved back two years ago after jobs and retirement elsewhere, and I see in these two programs emblematic of the change in Mill Valley. And of course, and the housing concerns for people who have less than 60% of the median income. Mill Valley is a different place and I thank all of you who've made it a receptive place to old codgers, but also to others in the community whom we didn't recognize 50, 60 years ago, just didn't recognize. Thank you and thanks to you folks and you folks and everyone else here.
Thank you.
Other great positive comments like that one? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much for your presentations. And Tammy, in particular, your comments were heartfelt and very, very meaningful and thank you for sharing them, honestly. Thank you. Okay, very good. So we're getting close to public open time where you can talk about things like Alto Tunnel. Before we do that, we have a consent calendar, which are items that we don't discuss, that we pass them on consent. Is there any member from the City Council that wishes to pull an item from consent? Is there any member of the public that wishes to pull an item from the consent calendar? Seeing none, any online?
Make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Okay, yeah.
Second.
Thank you very much, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Would you like to run the meeting, former mayor?
He would, actually.
Okay. Well, you know, Jim, I have to just go through things in the proper order here. Okay, and now we're on to public open time. So items that are not on the agenda. This is your chance to ask anything of the City Council, the city manager, and to hopefully get an answer from us, so. And while people are thinking about that, I'm going to talk about Alto Tunnel for a little bit. So Alto Tunnel is a very long, complicated story. I'd be more than happy to have a long discussion with you on this anytime that you're interested in having it. So I serve on the Transportation Authority of Marin Board and this has been a topic there also. So what is the significance of the Alto Tunnel? So the Alto Tunnel is the former train tunnel. It was built in the 1880s, right? So it was built 140 years ago. It did have the train service until the late 1960s, then the tunnel was decommissioned. As you say, it's been plugged with concrete and pea gravel, about, I think about 400 yards of pea gravel and concrete, plugged both ends of it. The middle section has collapsed, so the tunnel is essentially completely gone. It's not something that you can reopen. That's the, the notion is that you can reopen the Alto Tunnel. So it cannot be reopened. There are also very, very complicated legal issues, particularly surrounding what's called the Southern Portal. The Southern Portal is how you enter into the tunnel. Long story short, the property owner there owns both properties that are on top of the tunnel and those property rights go literally to the center of the earth. In other words, those property rights aren't just at the level of the earth, they go all the way down to the middle of the earth. So there's no way around it. So it's complicated to reopen the tunnel. It's not impossible, but it's complicated. It is going to be extraordinarily expensive. Estimates are over $100 million. And just to put that into perspective, that is more than what the county is expecting to pay in order to build the new on-ramp onto 580 to connect 101 to 580 to get over the Richmond Bridge. It's more than the combined total of many of the overpasses that we need to widen over 101, so it's really complicated. And Richmond, who's the director of the Transportation Authority, says, "Funding is never easy." And she was specifically talking specifically about this thing. So funding is not easy. It's not impossible, but it's going to be expensive and it's going to be primarily time-consuming. So this is what we've decided to do. The city of Mill Valley, the city of Corder Madera, the county of Marin, and the Transportation Authority have all put money into funding a study for Horse Hill to come up with a specific recommendation on how we can improve Horse Hill to connect Mill Valley to Corder Madera and Larkspur and so forth. The benefit of doing this is, one, it's something that's going to be significantly less expensive on the order of one to two to three million dollars. And secondly, it's something that we can get done pretty quickly, within the next one to two years, I hope. And that way, we can connect these two communities to each other so that people can get back and forth, walking or riding their bikes in a safe manner. That's really our primary objective. Once we have that, we can take the time to study Alto Tunnel and figure out how best to go about doing this. And we'll have transportation in place already and we can afford to spend the time to figure out how to do it and how to fund it. And that, I think that's the right sequence of events to complete what's called the North-South Greenway. North-South Greenway basically connects the Golden Gate Bridge all the way up to Cloverdale in Sonoma County to create a one continuous green path that people can ride and walk on to connect all of the communities in between. So that's, long story short, and again, I could talk about this forever, but that's basically where we've landed. Yes, go ahead. We want to have a follow-on question.
I don't think I quite understood. Do you mean to have a pathway up over Horse Hill?
Yeah, so Horse Hill, there already is a path that goes along the side there, but that path is about six feet wide. It's very narrow, so it's not possible to safely ride a bike in both directions and to walk. So the, the study that we're funding right now is to come up with, hopefully, I think, three alternatives for how to improve that path to make it safe. And the three alternatives will include widening it, potentially flattening it, but we don't know what those are. But the idea is to come up with alternatives and cost estimates for each alternative so we can bring it to all the partners and say, "This is what it's going to cost. Here are three different ways of doing it. Which way do you want to do it?" Essentially, want to force the Transportation Authority of Marin to make a decision on this project. And the way to force it is to come up with concrete proposals for it. And then once you get a concrete proposal, the rule of thumb is if you can get it 30% engineered, you can go out and get funding for it. And the way successful funding has taken place for projects like this is to get that engineered and make it a sizable enough product that is attractive to fund. And if we can combine it with other segments of the North-South Greenway into one project that can get funded, that can make it even more successful in terms of going out and getting funding for it. That's what we're trying to accomplish. But it's taken four years just to get to this point, just to show you how long it takes to get things done in the world of transportation. Taken four years just to get to the point where we're putting together a plan for the project. Yes, next door, question? And you can ask questions about anything. It doesn't have to be about Alto Tunnel.
The beauty of the Alto Tunnel for me was that you didn't have to climb up and over. And I've ridden my bike over the, you know, by Horse Hill and by the freeway and it took a lot of effort and I had to get off and push my bike up.
Yeah, so, yeah.
And if it was flat, it would leave it more accessible to more people and me on my tricycle.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah, so we're fortunate that, and this is a topic which we're going to discuss in a little bit, but we're fortunate that we have electric bikes and that might not be an option for you, but for many people, that is something which is flattening. I'll say that Alto Tunnel is not flat. It's not flat. It's actually got an 80-foot hill in, inside of it, right? So the train actually went up and over a hill to get through. So it's actually not a flat tunnel either, right? So to make it flat would be further expense to try to do that. So you're basically combining, you know, Mill Valley at one level and, you know, Corder Madera at a different level, right? They're not at the same level. So there's actually a hill there also, so it's not flat. Look, Alto Tunnel, in concept, sounds amazing, right? To combine it in those ways. There are just time issues and cost issues that are the primary thing. And there are pretty significant legal issues. And getting things done in the world of transportation, when you get involved with property rights, really slows things down and really escalates costs. It's very, very difficult. If you have to use eminent domain where you're basically, you take land, you are getting into a world of legal issues that are very complex and very, very time-consuming to work through. Other questions about things not having to do with Alto Tunnel? Anything going on in our city? We're here to answer your questions, so we'd love to, love to do that. Yes. There's some new, oh, yeah. Oh, there we go. That's one way of doing it.
My name is Sandra Masson.
We're not hearing you.
I'm Sandra Masson, a resident of the Redwoods, and I'm the coordinator for the Seniors for Peace demonstrations on Fridays. As most everyone in this room knows, every Friday afternoon, a group of Seniors for Peace is out at the corner with our signs, waving to all the passerby's and singing peace songs. We're joined every week by three musicians from outside the community who bring their guitars and lead our singing. One of those musicians is our very own mayor, Urban Carmel. So this evening, we, Seniors for Peace, want to give a great big thank you to you, Urban, for sharing your time and talent with us so faithfully every Friday afternoon. Thank you.
Don't laugh too hard. Thank you. It's really my pleasure to be there, so I really enjoy it. And I would encourage the entire Redwoods community to get it out there and I would encourage even members of the City Council to get out there from time to time. It's pretty fun. And bring a harmonica, bring a tambourine, bring whatever you like, so.
We've designated you as our representative of the council, Mr. Mayor. So thank you very much for the last 12 years.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for hosting this.
State your name and your address.
Yeah. I might not be the most liked guy in the world after this. Can you hear me? Is this better? First, let me ask you a question. Has the council received any feedback or concerns about the, the Defensible Space Inspector Squad from the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority yet? If so, I might just echo. If not, I may have to be the first person to sort of go on record. No? Okay. My name is Evan Cross. I'm an architect and 30-year resident of Mill Valley. I'm compelled tonight to speak to you because I feel very strongly about what I want to bring to your attention. I hope you keep an open mind and receive my comments in the spirit, in the spirit they are intended, which is to be positive and help guide our cherished community forward on an important issue. On July 3rd, a person or persons from the newly created Defensible Inspector Squad from the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority visited my home. They came on my property without my permission, knowledge, or presence. They photographed my home and then they published the photographs on the internet. The trespassing and invasion of privacy, in my opinion, crosses the line, but it's only the first of a series of problematic and offensive issues, issues I fear are unfolding for many others. Through a door leaf lid, I was informed that my home had been inspected and I could access a report about it online. To do so, I had to provide all my personal information, including a phone number and email address, where I couldn't even see the report. Delving deeper, I learned that I was expected, it was expected of me to address any issues raised by the report with vague but threatening language about required by law and report back what I had done in response to this new authority, including even how much I spent to address each issue. I voted for Measure C in 2020, which established the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority and raises approximately $20 million annually. I voted in favor of the measure on the belief that the money would be put to use protecting us all from the threat of a wildfire. I am dismayed to see that instead the funds are being used to inspect our homes and create an online database of records of cited issues. I feel as if this approach criminalizes the victim in a sense. Wildfires don't target vulnerable homes and my wooden gates in my backyard doesn't cause a wildfire. To presume so is akin to blaming pedestrians because they are at risk of being hit by a car or bus. Let me be perfectly clear at this point and say I am hugely aware of, and as an architect, very active and insensible and achievable fire prevention and protection efforts. I am not pro wildfire, nor is anyone. I am not pro-wildfire, nor is anyone. To catalog the vulnerabilities of our home, though, seems to be about preventing property damage and not about preventing wildfires. This approach of shaming and threatening homeowners and residents rather than working with them towards a common and important goal is unwise and unhelpful. I am most gravely alarmed at the methodology of publishing online a record of issues in light of the current trend of insurance abandonment. Without my knowledge or permission, there is now a record depicting my property as somehow hazardous. What happens when I need to renew my homeowner's insurance? Or, God forbid, a fire does damage or destroy my home, and the insurance companies are looking for any reason they can find to deny coverage. If my neighbors' homes are being similarly reviewed, the overall picture being painted of our community is some kind of death trap, which is unfair and untrue. Importantly, and I don't want to argue about all the details, but of the six items cited on my report, four are flatly wrong, and the remaining two are de minimis and would make zero difference in the event of a wildfire. But I'm supposed to be spending money to fix these things and then report back to the authority that I've done so? Or it stays on my record that I had no knowledge or participation in creating? J. Edgar Hoover would be proud. Despite this, a numerous home-hardening elements, such as the metal roof I put on when I purchased my 1927 home, and were cited in my inspection, I am still listed in the highest-risk categories.
Mr. Cross, I think, Mr. Mayor...
Yeah, could you, you want to just finish up? I think we get the point.
Yeah. And actually, I was getting to the point where I said I promised I'd be positive. And I have two categories of positive. I'll be happy to give them later. Basically, I think these inspections should be collaborative and not unannounced, and we shouldn't be shaming people into doing things. The second part of it is, there are so many things that we could be doing with, with at-risk power lines, with fire breaks, with, with, you know, funds for hardening, you know, combustible roofing, you know, there's, including getting some of this, this, hundreds of millions of dollars to areas that probably need it far more than we do. Because we all know when Santa Rosa burned, we felt it. So, that protection and that money, I think, could be found to, to be much better used. So, thank you.
Thank you, Evan. Jim, you work in this industry. Do you have any comments?
Well, my recommendation is, this is not a policy issue, something where the city manager can address with the, Mr. Cross addresses issues and report back to you, Mr. Mayor, on the outcome. So, that's my recommendation.
Todd, have you got any comments on what you just heard?
Yeah, just off the side. Have you talked to the executive director, Mark Brown? What have you done at this point? So, it's just, this is the first incident?
Well, I'm a little concerned that approaching a new authority, you know, I'm just going to be taken as a sole deliverer and argue over low-end points. I think the much larger methodology is being employed on the city of Mill Valley, Mill Valley's behalf, there needs to be kind of a timeout. Are we all going to be published as, like, heavy-duty, at-risk, and what happens with the term?
I understand. You're talking about multiple layers. Okay. Can you do me a favor? Can you write down your, your email and phone number?
I can connect you to Evan.
Do you have it?
Yeah, I can connect you to.
I'll follow up with you tomorrow.
See, there you go. Thank you. Thanks for coming here, Evan. Yeah. Make your way to the podium.
Good evening all. My name is Dan Levinson, longtime Mill Valley resident, hailing here 20 years, all the way from Sausalito. So, I made it, made it all this way. Thank you all for hosting us tonight, and if I'm lucky enough, maybe I'll be a future resident here at the Redwoods as well. I'm hopeful to bring up the matter of resident construction with a general concern that there are certain neighbors, neighborhoods, ours included and Blythe Del Canyon, that seem to be undergoing extensive concurrent construction, which has really taken the heart out of the peace and the tranquility that maybe many of you all come to know. Over the years, we've enjoyed moments of silence, but I can't recall those times any longer. In our immediate vicinity, we have upwards of six in a quarter-mile, and if you extend that to half a mile, the number jumps to some in the, in the double digits. And so, my, my question is if there are any active efforts to look at municipal codes to maybe rein it in, and/or what are any efforts for any oversight committees to make sure that the associated planning and building departments are doing right on behalf of all of the residents and not those only seeking to improve their own homes? One last little bit is that I really enjoyed all the dialogue earlier about the finding homes for those ADUs in particular. We've seen a great number of ADUs being stood up, and anecdotally, they do not appear to be for providing homes to anybody who may seek or may be in need of, of these lower-cost units, that they seem to be purely for, to expand the value of their own properties. So, I just want to make sure that the goodwill that was intended to go out there is actually being recouped. Thank you, sir.
Sure. So, ADUs. I can, again, I can talk to you for hours about ADUs. Long story short, Mill Valley had an ordinance that basically provided 500 square feet, deed restricted, to be rented at below-market. That was the Mill Valley ADU ordinance. It was awesome because you essentially gave people a bonus to build a bigger house under the, with the understanding that that unit would be a below-market unit. So, pretty awesome. We were the only ones that had that policy. We developed that in 2016. In 2020, the state of California basically said, hey, we want ADUs everywhere, and they, they superseded the Mill Valley ordinance with a blanket ordinance for all communities. And even though we tried to explain to them specifically what we were doing in our community, why we thought that was important, why we thought that in a place like Mill Valley with fire risk and so forth, we really want to try to minimize the size of homes and add bonus space only when you need to, and that we needed affordable housing, and this was a way to provide affordable housing, the state said, we don't care. This is what we're going to be doing. That's the honest truth. So, that's how that essentially came about. So, it is sad the way it's developed, and we tried to create ADUs that will be rented out, but we can't compel homeowners to do so.
Sure.
So, that's how that works. So, interesting question about the concurrent construction, because I was on the planning commission for a number of years. I was the planning chair. I asked that exact same question. I go, why do we allow multiple construction projects to take place at the same time in the same neighborhood? And the answer was, really hard to basically tell people that you own property, but you don't have the right to improve that property. Really hard to do that. It's basically not possible to do that. I don't think any community does that. So, it goes in waves. When I bought my house in 1999, we had five years of construction, like literally everybody around me did construction, and then the city came in like three different times, city, including PG&E, and tore up the road like every single summer. So, it was nonstop for years, then it stopped for 20 years. And now, we've had two different construction projects that have been going on simultaneously. It's been disruptive once again. It seems to come in waves, and then basically everything gets done. So, I know that's probably not the answer you want to hear, but it's hard to stop people from doing what they're allowed to do with their property when they've got that right. So, somebody wants to come in and submit an application to improve their home, they do have that right. I know it's very disruptive. We actually have, relative to almost every community, I think probably relative to every community in Marin, the most restrictive building rules about when you can do construction. So, you can't even hire somebody to paint your house on a Sunday, for example. I mean, that's how restrictive it is. It's very, very restrictive. So, other communities, you can do all of those things throughout the weekend. You can't do anything that requires a permit, I believe, on Saturday and Sunday, yeah. So, nothing that requires a permit can be done over the weekends. That's not the case in other communities. They can build on Saturday and Sunday, too. So, so, and if you see a neighbor with hired help under a permit doing construction, you should absolutely inform the city because they are not allowed to do that. Ours generally are from eight to five, so they cannot start before. They can set up, but they can't make a lot of noise. They can't plug in power equipment until eight, and they have to be done by five. And generally, they end early in the, and again, that's not like other communities. Other communities start at 7:00 AM in the morning, they go to 6:00 PM at night, 7:00 PM at night, so.
Yes. Unfortunately, I've become more familiar with the municipal codes, which seems like there are some authoritative measures in there, the nuisance codes, as well as the time-to-completion, which I think is another key thing. And so, my, my question really come to you is, take a look at again, if you would. And then, if there's any oversight to make sure that the planning and the building commissions and the, the police who are called on for traffic delays or whatnot are mindful of...
Yeah, absolutely.
That, you know, and it's, it's really, it's like, it's the, it's the long-running, right?
Yeah.
That, and I, in municipal code, there's penalties, they have to reapply for the permit.
Correct.
I, as a resident, I don't know if that's happening. I hope that it would, but...
It does. So, in Mill Valley, and again, I think this is unique in our city, you have 12 months to quote-unquote button up your house. In other words, you have 12 months to tear down, do your foundation, do all your framing, get the roof on, get the siding on, put the windows on, close the doors. That's buttoning it up, basically, right? So, all exterior work has to be done within 12 months. Then you get 12 months to do all the interior work, the bathrooms, the floors, everything else. But at that point, you're not moving earth around, you're not making noise, that disrupts the neighborhood. So, you have to get it done within 12 months, and then you have another 12 months to basically complete your project. And again, that's pretty unique. Other communities, they don't have that. So, we try to get all that, well, we're very mindful. So, what happened was Cornelia, you might be familiar with Cornelia, it's a street in downtown Mill Valley. If Evan is still here, he lives on it. There were, it was a complicated project with two homes being built on one property, and essentially, the guy who was doing it was not experienced, and he ran over like by a huge number of months. And that's what, that's what basically precipitated a change in the way we do construction. We have to finish the thing on the exterior within a 12-month period, and then you can move inside. You can't just have it go for 24 months.
I'm proud to live in a community that has stringent rules as such. I am sorry to suggest that reality is not adhering to what makes you feel so proud that we're tight about it.
No, no, you should, you should absolutely bring any complaints that you've got about noise that's coming from a particular construction site. First of all, what I do, so I've got two projects in my neighborhood, I talk to the contractor directly, I talk to the homeowners directly. You know, that's generally the fastest, most expedient way. People respond to neighbors pretty well, and if that doesn't work, then you should absolutely call the, the planning director and have the planning director get involved. But I would approach them first, and I find that people are generally pretty responsive to that.
Thank you.
And I'm very apologetic that you've got all this construction going on. It shouldn't be that way.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Other questions from the community here on any topic? Oh, Nayima?
I'm just going to jump on. Hi, I'm Nayima, and I live next door in Pickleweed Apartments, and I'm going to tag on to what that gentleman just said because this is something that I've come to, I've brought to city manager before and the prior city manager, and I've, Rick's heard from me a few times, and I made a suggestion for a solution because we do suffer from a lot of noise that seems unnecessary. I'm not talking just about, I'm not a homeowner, and I'm not talking about people fixing their homes, but just even from the Mill Valley Public Works yard, they start beeping their trucks at 6:00 in the morning, and it's just nonstop, and you can't even think to prepare yourself to get ready to start your workday, or, you know, get, when you're listening to beep, 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 beep. And I've talked to the folks that run, different gentlemen that run the yard over there, and at times, there are solutions that are put in place, which is like backing their trucks in at the end of the day so that in the morning, when they go to retrieve their trucks, there's not so much moving around, coordinating with outside vendors that come in and use the yard to unload or to load or whatnot, and making them aware of the need to be conscious. And, and I even think just, I mean, the Speedway out here on Miller Avenue is another sore point that is growing and growing. It's become like a, a drag racing strip in a sense. And so, what I would hope is that we could maybe, as a city, as a community, just spread the word, put it, put it out in our MB Connect, or, or just even speaking on it right now, to bring a level of consciousness to people that live here, to be mindful that, that we are, are, are an enjoyable community that appreciates nature and, and that being quiet is okay, not, you know, have to be silent, but just...
Yep, I got it.
So, that, that was my solution, just some sort of campaign to like bring awareness because I think people don't necessarily know their own noise. Additionally, I've seen many construction projects all around, like Tam High has basically had a project going on since 2000.
Yep. Yeah.
And so, and, and then, you know, and then the sewage project, and then the part, the solar project, and then they redid the parking lot over the backside here, and then they paved Miller, and that's a lot of work in one space. And so, being mindful again of just how, what happens when and where would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Finally, in addition to...
We should probably wrap it up so that we...
I'm wrapping it up. This is just one request. Many of us use this public path that goes around here that connects from here to the main path, and the bridges, both bridges that connect you to cross are falling apart. And somebody asked me to even come to you guys to bring, because they know that I come to you guys for everything.
Wait, the bridge, which bridge?
The bridges between Pickleweed and Miller Creek, and then the bridge that leads from Miller Creek to the bike path, which was temporarily fixed, but not like really fixed or what, it was temporarily addressed when add, because it was closed off at one point, and then someone addressed it. But both bridges need to be addressed. Many of these residents use those bridges, and that was actually one of the people that brought it to my attention, plus another person that lives down on the southern end of Pickleweed. And so, I wanted to make sure that I brought that to your attention. You can feel the boards.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other public comments on items not on the agenda? Any online city clerk? Okay, good. Thank you so much for that. We're going to move on to a couple of business items that we've got on the agenda this evening. We've got four different things that we're going to be discussing, starting with the mayor's response to cyber-preparedness. Are we there yet? Do we have a presentation? God dang it. I skipped over an entire item here. Okay, yes.
We have a spill.
Yeah.
We have a hazmat.
Okay, very good. Council liaison assignments. Jim, you've been dying to speak this evening. Why don't we start with you and then come this direction?
Good morning, or good afternoon, good evening, Mill Valley. The only thing I have to announce is that yesterday at 1:07 PM, I became a grandfather for the sixth time, a little girl, my daughter Ashley, so...
Congratulations.
Thank you, Lieutenant, for clapping so heartily back there. Okay, that's all I have to...
Well, there's a lot of future council people being created.
Yes, in Mill Valley.
Thank you. Congratulations.
I just wanted to give an update. I serve on the Legislative Committee. The legislature is currently on summer recess until August 5th, but before they broke for recess, there was a flurry of activity. It's amazing the amount of draft legislation that is going on up at the state. It's almost hard to keep track of, but fortunately, we have Legislative Committee that does it. So, there will be two general obligation bonds, education and climate, that are going to appear on the November ballot, and there's going to also be four other propositions that will be placed on the ballot. There was many more that were proposed, but they have been withdrawn. There continues to be a lot of legislation focused on housing, housing element, ADUs, public safety with retail theft and environmental safety. The committee is watching very closely these pieces of legislation that involve the RENA process and also legislation that makes wildfire hazard zones easier to develop. So, I will be reporting back when legislature's back in session on those particular legislations. Homeless Committee met. Many of you may know that Supreme Court just finished their session. There was great concern over Johnson versus Grants Pass, that decision, what came down 6-3, and it was basically that the enforcement of generally applicable laws regulating camping on public property does not constitute cruel and unusual punishment. So, the ruling did comment that local elected officials and not judges should be deciding how to handle homelessness, which is actually welcome news. The challenge for California is that each jurisdiction is going to interpret and have their own ordinances, so we may see a patchwork of rules and regulations. The jurisdictions within our county are going to be working together as we develop policies and make suggestions to our respective cities. Also, a full report of the point... Also, a full report of the point in time count regarding homelessness and unhoused individuals in our county is going to be released at the end of this month, so we will have a better sense of unhoused individuals in our community. So I'll report back at that time. And then here in the community, as you know, I've been working on age and friendly initiative, which I'm very excited about. We have put together a great advisory group, but we're also looking forward to expand that group, include a ground number of stakeholder community members. So if you're interested, please do reach out. We want all who are interested to be at the table. Closer to home, I got to announce an All-Star game at Boyle Park. It's something that's close to my heart. My son played for a number of years. So I am pleased to report that a number of our All-Star teams won their district. This is a big deal, because they bring home a banner that we hang at Boyle Park. There'll probably be a ceremony here at City Hall, eventually at the end of summer. So our 12s and our 13s and our 14s won district. The 14s made to sectional championships, but lost to Petaluma, which always boasts a really strong team. The 12s are currently in sectionals, and they are actually playing tonight against Petaluma. So hopefully, we'll have some good news from them soon. And that is all for my report.
Good evening, everyone. A couple of liaison and GPA assignee updates. I shared this at our last meeting, but since we have some audience members, wanted to share an update on MCE, Clean Energy. This is our publicly owned utility that Mill Valley has been a member of since the beginning, going on, I think, 13 or 14 years at this point. So when you pay your energy bill, most of it goes to PG&E, but a portion of it, for most customers, goes to MCE. And MCE provides electrical contracts for that energy, whereas PG&E maintains the lines that we see bringing us that energy, as well as doing some billing. Both of them do some billing support. So us on the MCE board recognized this year that many folks have been feeling the brunt of rising electricity costs. And so we put funding in the budget to provide a $20 a month rebate, essentially a reduction, you don't have to apply for it, it's not a rebate in that sense, but a reduction in your electricity bill if you meet the criteria for the CARES program, which PG&E offers. So if anyone here is on the CARES program, you can contact MCE, and you can get $20 a month taken off in addition to the discount you already receive. And if you have any questions on that, you can contact MCE directly, or if you feel like reaching out to me, I'd be happy to point you in the right direction. There's also a $25 a month discount for eligible small businesses as well. And I've employed the support, I've gotten the support of our Chamber of Commerce in getting the word out to our small businesses in town who might be eligible for that. Another update is we at the city applied for a grant at the state. It's through SB 1, which was a law passed in 2017 to fund transportation. And a portion of that goes towards sea level rise abatement and studying how to address sea level rise, an issue very important at the Redwoods. And Todd and others in City Hall and in our Public Works Department have worked diligently to look for funding on how we basically study the portion that goes from the community center all the way down to Tam Valley. So we submitted this grant last month, and I worked with staff on looking for support from our regional partners in that process. And I represent our city council on Baywave, which works on sea level rise issues. I also are representative on the League of California Cities, and I'm vice chair this year of the Environmental Quality Committee. We recently had our last meeting of the year, and we invited a pretty broad range of folks to come and speak to us about different programs, one of which was Josh Friday, who's from Marin originally, and he's the chief service officer at the state. And he provided some information about how cities can get involved in the Climate Corps program. So I'm going to be passing on information to Todd and Grace in our city, in our city hall and Planning Department on how we can take advantage of that program and bring in some climate fellows maybe next year. And then finally, working with council member Joakim, kind of wearing my school board liaison role, have dived into an issue we'll be talking about in a little bit, e-bike safety. It's become apparent that if we're going to address this, there's things we can do as a city, but ultimately, if we want to address e-bike safety for kids at the middle school, we have to engage our schools, right? And get them really engaged in this issue, and they are very interested in engaging in the issue, which is great to see. So we had a meeting, I think it was about a week ago. We invited Leslie Harlander, who serves on the Tamil Pious Union High School District Board and lives in town, Sharon Nakatani, who's president of the school board this year and liaison to our city council, as well as Safe Roots to School, and some local advocates, including Jonathan and Bob, who are here, just to get, get to the bottom of what everyone is doing and how we can support each other. So one of the things we talked about there that we're working on now since then have been engaged Todd, as well as the superintendent, and our police chief. I'm gonna just keep talking. Oh. It was my phone. All right. Pesky little devices. Anyway, we are basically writing a letter that's going to go out with the back-to-school packet. And so the idea is that parents and students get this letter, and it has all of our logos on it, and it basically shares information about which e-bikes, if you're going to get your kid an e-bike, are legal, and which are illegal, and how to tell the difference, and where to look for that information, because it's become very apparent that there's legal e-bikes that may cause issues, but there's some, the ones that are really bad, are actually illegal. And schools don't allow illegal guns, or drugs, or anything else on campus. And so making it clear what's illegal is definitely something that's worthwhile. So that's it for me.
Okay, well, thank you. So that segue is actually pretty nicely, Max, because on Thursday, on Wednesday, we're having our second T-Mac meeting. And so our relationship with the school and communication about all matters having to do with transportation is something that we've been trying to figure out. So I'll pass along your initiative and maybe recommend that they get in touch with you on that. So. Good. So like I said, so we, we formed a traffic and mobility advisory committee this year, and that committee started work six weeks ago. It has its second meeting this coming Wednesday. For those who are interested in traffic and mobility, urge you to attend. It starts at 5:00 PM at City Hall. The nine-county Bay Area has created a housing authority that is putting a $20 billion initiative on the November 2024 ballot. So you'll see it when you vote this year. We in Marin County formed a steering committee to help direct how those funds would be deployed within our county. I was selected to be the representative for the small cities in Mill Valley or in Marin County, which is basically every city except for San Rafael and Novato, so I'll be doing that. And our kickoff meeting is on July 25th at 12:00 PM. For those who are interested in matters having to do with housing, we'll be having that meeting then. Likewise, the same day, we'll go from talking about housing to talking about county transportation. We're working on a countywide transportation plan. I serve on the Transportation Authority Board. Also, on July 25th, we'll be talking about that, trying to develop a vision for mobility in Marin County for the next 25 years. That meeting starts at 4:00 PM on that day. And then, because I've got nothing else to do, I'm also going to a Transportation Authority Board meeting at 6:00 PM that night. So my Thursday on the July 25th is pretty much shot. So. But there's good news. On August 6th, we're doing National Night Out. This is the day every year where we celebrate our police force and safety and preparedness in our community. It's an awesome event. It takes place at the Depot Plaza. Like I said, it's going to be on August 6th. It starts at, I think, 5:00 PM. And I'm sure our police chief will be there. He might even say a few comments about it when he talks later on. So we're looking forward to that, but I recommend coming on out, because it's a pretty fun night. Councilmember Joakim might be interested in knowing that on Thursday, I'll be throwing out the first pitch at the Pacifics game. I desperately need to get to the mound this week to practice, otherwise I'm absolutely going to ground it in to, to the catcher. So actually, I think I might even go out after tonight's meeting and throw a couple of balls around. So any tips you've got, throw them my way. So I don't want to look like a fool throwing this ball, so. And then lastly, I want to just give congratulations to the 2024 Millie Award winners. So Millie Awards basically celebrates people in the creative arts in our city. People have made a significant contribution. We have a, an event coming up on October 27th, which seems like, you know, a lifetime away, but at 5:00 PM, it's at the Community Center. I went to it last year. It is awesome. I'm not kidding. So each individual person who receives a reward, an award, is, they show a video on them, and then that person comes up and makes a speech. And these are not just off-the-couch kind of council member speeches. These are highly polished, really well-done speeches. I was blown away last year by the five or six presentations that were given, and including the video. So I highly recommend attending this thing. Again, it's on October 27th. But let's recognize the winners this year. Desiree Goyeti and Ed Bogus, Larry Jordan, Jackie Lelane, Vicky Larson, Paola Gian Turco, and Michael Vogel. They are well-deserved winners, and we're super excited for them, and super excited for this event. So. There we go. City manager, your report.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I just have a few updates. One, I'm just, again, just really proud of the team. Not everyone always sees it, but when you bring in people like Tammy and Michelle, and, you know, they, they pick up the work and help the support of what Lynn Walsh has been trying to do for a lot of years, of bringing our departments and community together to really lean in and provide the best services to our, to our community. And what you heard today, this wasn't top-down, this was our team. Our team said, we need to do this, we want to do this, we don't have any money, we don't know how we're going to do it, but we're going to do it. And, and they gave two really good examples, but this is happening continually amongst our team. And again, it's, it's, it's that core group. And so Tammy and Michelle, and Lynn, thank you for your vision, and thanks for all you're doing. You guys are killing it, and keep it up. We're really proud. Our very own captain, Lindsay Haynes, graduated the prestigious FBI National Academy. She's the first female from Mill Valley Police Department to graduate from the intensive 10-week leadership program. The class consisted of 290 law enforcement leaders from 46 states and 24 countries. So we're really proud of her. Congratulations, Lindsay. On July 9th, 2024, our very own Sergeant Michael Pacetti was recognized by MAD, that is Mothers Against Drunk Driving, for his efforts in DUI prevention and impaired driving enforcement. Drunk driving is still one of the number-one causes of death on our roadways. It should also be noted that Sergeant Pacetti was the only sergeant recognized in the nine-barrier counties for this award. So great work on his part. I want to thank councilmember Prey. He touched on it on his comments. We submitted for a grant on adaptation and sea level rise about six weeks ago, I think, and we didn't get that. We kept really trying to look at opportunities. And again, we're looking for, within our leadership team, over the next five years, to develop projects and adaptation projects, to start working towards our King tides that affect us and sea level rise. And we want to, we want to start the process now, and then give the tools in the toolbox, you know, down the road for future leaders to build on what we started. And so with the vision of this council and councilmember Prey, we submitted another grant, and I want to give a member of our community a lot of accolades and thank her. It's Juliette Hart. She's a Mill Valley resident. She did this pro bono. Her kids also go to Mill Valley Middle School. They're within the school district, and she just believes strongly in this, and so she supported us pro bono. And we submitted a grant, it's a million dollars with 200 additional, $200,000 in additional funding. That'll be supported by Flood Zone 3 in the city. We'll find out if we receive that grant in the next month. Again, something that was really helpful for this are letters of support, you know. So when you think about, we're looking at three adaptation projects to help us from Friends Field all the way down this corridor to Tamil Pious High, right? We're, it affects here, it affects our housing next door, it affects the school district, SASM, the city. And so we took the lead and submitted that. And councilmember Prey helped us with a number of letters of support. We received them, support from the county of Marin, SASM, Southern Marin Fire District, Senator McGuire, Congressman Huffman, Assembly Member Conley, and Marin Transit, and as well as Tam. And so thank you for your support and help with that. So more to come there. And then along those lines, through the mayor and the council, and really the help of our city attorney, Ender, we've been working on two really important projects. And one of them, it's Flood Zone 3. And so Flood Zone 3 is a tax of our community, as well as county jurisdiction and Marin City. And over, historically, over the last 15 to 20 years, 51% of that revenue annually from an incorporated Mill Valley supports Flood Zone 3. But over that period of time, our city has received approximately a million dollars in funding. And so when you think about how much that 51% number is, about a million to 1.3 million that our residents pay, and it really hasn't come back to Mill Valley. And so it's a, it's a sensitive conversation, but it's one that our council, with our staff, have been working with the county council and staff to really problem-solve this and develop an MOU of understanding of how we're going to move forward. And so the first of two steps are in the works now. And again, without our city attorney's help, we wouldn't even be here. And, and so I really appreciate Ender's help. But I just want to, want to spell out some of the work we're working on right now. We've secured $3 million in Flood Zone 3 funding this fiscal year and next. So the next 24 months, we'll have $3 million in funding to do the Sycamore Pump Station rehabilitation project, the flap gates and check valves, which doesn't sound sexy, but it's very important. But that's throughout all of our drainage systems, to develop a drainage database, so we can start to track and plan out over $18 million in infrastructure and drainage projects over the next 20 years. The Arroyo Corte Madera del Procedio Drainage Improvements, and also a study on the effectiveness and improvements of our drainage channels. So one, we're attacking our current flood control projects. It's $18 million over 20 years, and trying to secure funding for that without taxing our community. Our community's already being taxed. And so we want to, we wanted to secure those funds. And then also look at the King tides and sea level rise, and find adaptation projects and grants to support that. So two really important moving processes, moving parallel. But again, the staff, the council, and our city attorney have been really instrumental to have those side conversations, develop the strategies, and really protect our revenue streams, our citizens, our taxpayers, and our infrastructure for the long term. So more to come there, but I'm happy to share some really good developments in the immediacy. And just the last one to the council. I know councilmember Joakim and Vice Mayor Burke are working on the council procedures and rules and procedures. But this is another issue that keeps coming up for us. I did sign a letter to oppose. The Cal Cities requested that all cities oppose AB 3093. It's the land-use housing element and streamline multi-housing initiative. Council has received the letter that I, we drafted and sent to Cal Cities. It's also in the back for the community, if you want to read it. Really, as a process, these should come through the mayor to the council, have a discussion, and send these to the League of California Cities. But as you all know, what is happening is, it's happening in real time. And so they're asking for a letter of support to oppose or support in like 24 to 48 hours. And we don't have the time. And so just out of transparency, I want to share this publicly, that we did send that. I did sign it, because I believe the five councilmembers support opposing it. And I think as a recommendation, when we do bring the council rules and procedures before all of you, that we talk about maybe the procedure to streamline it, where we delegate that through our legislative council member and the mayor at the time. But anyway, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, and other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions from the community on anything that you just heard? If not, we'll move on to items. Okay, we're going to move on to new business. So this is where I was about 10 minutes ago. So, right, so we're going to talk about cyber preparedness. And now you're ready to hit it. Okay. And with us is Lynn Walsh.
All right. Thank you so much. Good evening, mayor and council, and good evening, residents of the Redwoods. It's very nice to be here tonight. It's very nice to be here tonight. So the next two items on the agenda are both responses to the Marin County Civil Grand Jury. And so this is basically a group of appointed representatives that look at issues of concern in the county. And so the first presentation will be about cyber preparedness, and then the next one that will follow will be Chief Navarro, your police chief, on e-bikes. So I'm going to kick it off by talking about cybersecurity. And just like we wouldn't leave City Hall open for anyone to walk in on the weekend or at night, we also don't want to let any of our digital assets be open to people to come in, malicious actors to come in. You've probably seen in the news, cities that have had cyber attacks, ransomwares. It's very, very expensive to fix those problems when those attacks happen, and it's very disruptive. If you can imagine, so many of our digital services right now, or our services to our community, are digital. So imagine the police station, our community center, our library, you know, basically being frozen up, in a sense, still providing services, but the digital side being frozen up. It's very disruptive, and it can be very costly. So the grand jury went and looked at the city back in 2020 and did a very thorough audit of our cybersecurity to make sure that we were, you know, locking our doors, basically. And so this, in 2024, is a follow-up to that report. They basically called in the city managers and other representatives from the county and basically asked, how are you doing? It was a checkup, and then made some further recommendations and findings. And that's what I'm going to talk about tonight. So before you, council, is to adopt the resolution that's in your packet. And basically, the report was released back in May 17th, on May 17th, and there's six findings and 10 recommendations. We're required to respond through the adoption of the resolution. We are supposed to say whether we agree or not with the findings. And then regarding the recommendations, there's 10, but we, as a city, only had to respond to two of them. The rest of them were geared towards the County of Marin. So before jumping into the report, just to give you a sense of the work that we've been doing over the last four years, we've had a multi-year cybersecurity and IT infrastructure upgrade. Everything, basically, the digital has been reviewed in some way, either hauled out of the building and trashed through e-waste and repaired and renewed. A lot of upgrades, I won't go through them all, but I'm really proud of the work that the city has done. I've been told by our IT services provider that of all the cities and towns, we're one of the more advanced in terms of our upgrade of our IT infrastructure. We've been putting in a very significant investment compared to a lot of other cities and towns, and that we should feel pretty good. Of course, knock on wood, we're still locking the doors, not patting ourselves on the backs too much, but we are making good progress, and I wanted to report that to you. So those are some of the current on the last slide and some of the planned initiatives that are coming up in the future. And those are detailed in your packet, councilmembers on Attachment 3. So for the findings, basically, there was five that we agreed with and one that we didn't agree with. So the first two were about business continuity clauses with our current IT contractors. So as a small city, we don't have the staff to have a full IT department, and so we contract out. And so one of the main companies that we contract out with is called Marin IT, and they've been around for a very long time. I've worked at the city for 18 years, and they've been our IT services provider for all of those 18 years. So they go way back in the county, and they know our system really well. And so basically, the grand jury looked at service providers like Marin IT and other cities and towns have similar contracts, and they said, you know, it seems like you're locking the doors, but what about the people who help you? Are they locking the doors? Do they have a good business continuity clause? Are your contracts up to date? And so we agreed, yes, it's very important to have those clauses and strong language so that our IT providers are also taking, making sure that they're buttoning up and making sure that no bad actors are getting into their systems because our contractors have access to our systems. The next three findings were about the benefits of insurance risk pools, cybersecurity plans, and the collaborative impact of joint power authorities, and we agreed with all of those. And then the last finding was about collective bargaining agreements. That's basically the labor agreement at the county. And since that's not our organization and not our jurisdiction, we basically said, partially disagree, which is the closest we can go to saying no comment. Basically, it's not our agency, we defer making a comment on another agency, we prefer to just focus on our own business. So that's why we did not agree with that one finding. And then, like I said, there's two recommendations that we needed to respond to. One was to require recent competitively-built bid contracts that have that business continuity language, and we agreed with that. And then also to adopt a .gov domain. So when you go to the City of Mill Valley website right now, you go to www.cityofmillvalley.org, which is fine, but .gov is more secured, it's monitored by a third-party security agency, it prevents people from spoofing. There's this thing where people will make like a fake website and make it look just like the city's website. That's called spoofing. So the .gov domain at the end of your URL or your website, it basically is another layer of security. And we've actually had it on our list of things to do for a very long time, and so this report is perfect timing, and it's on our implementation plan for the next 12 months. So both of these recommendations we agree with, and they are going to be implemented within 12 months. And so for the next steps, basically, council, we just ask that you consider adopting the resolution tonight, and then I'll have the mayor sign the copy tonight, and off it goes to the grand jury to show that we are compliant with the requirement that we respond to their recommendations and findings. And that's my report, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you. Questions from council, starting with the former mayor? Okay, coming in this direction. He's got none. Caroline, do you have questions?
I did. I was curious. So on recommendation one, staff report had a timeframe of 12 months to include the business continuity provisions. And I was just curious, how many contracts are at issue?
One major one, which is Marin IT. And then we do have a couple of contractors that help us with very specific software. So for example, the Planning and Building Department have a very specific software that they use, and they have one contractor that helps them with that. So we would basically just have to go down the list and see how many others there are, but it's a handful, like two or three. And then we just have to read through the contract and see if there's any of that language in there already. There might be. And if there isn't, then we're going to work with Ender to draft some template language that will be an amendment to those contracts.
And then I just had a couple of general questions. Do we have anyone from the city serving as a representative to the Marin Information Security Collaborative? I'd never heard of that before, so I was just curious if we've got somebody that...
Yes, we do. So the Marin IT, we contract with them to basically be our IT program manager and our project manager. And so they represent the City of Mill Valley on that. So it's Brad, I can't remember his last name right now.
Bowser.
Bowser, thank you. Brad Bowser, he's our representative.
And do we receive the monthly security awareness newsletter that's sent out to Marin agencies?
Yes. We don't, so the one that they send is very similar to the one that MSISAC stands, I can't remember what that stands for, but that's the other cybersecurity outreach. They're very similar, the two newsletters. And so instead of getting it from the county, which is kind of regurgitating what MSISAC puts out, we get that secondary one.
Great. And then my last question is, the city member of the Marin Security and Privacy Council?
Yes.
Okay. That was it?
Max, questions?
Yeah, just a question, Lynn. How often are we connecting with PG&E or Inwater Sewer Agency, folks like that who provide utilities and other, you know, services to the city that would be harmed in the event of like a cyber attack? Because I'm less worried about, you know, one of our departments going down and more worried about folks having access to electricity or water or sewage.
Yeah, that hasn't been an initiative that we've looked into, but it's wise to bring that up and to say, because this is a concern for the whole community. And so I guess something we could definitely do is to reach out to the representatives of those agencies. There are two agencies that share our network, and so one of the things that we want to do with this initiative is to also, so that's Southern Marin Fire shares our network, and so does SASM, or the wastewater treatment plant. And so since those have their own governing agencies and their own budgets, their cybersecurity is managed separately than us. And so that is one initiative that we're going to do, is to get in talks with them about creating some sort of agreement that as we fortify our cybersecurity, that they're keeping pace as best they can, because there is a vulnerability with them coming, there being some malware or bad actors coming in through those two systems.
Great, thanks. Along the last set of questions, so again, we're part of the Bay Cities Risk Pool, and that's important. So a lot of what we're talking about is related to Marin County and our partners. Marin IT is really key to this conversation because they built the security infrastructure, IT-wise, for the entire county, even the county, right? So they're the right people for the job, and that's why they represent us. On the Bay Cities side, the risk pool in real time, on a monthly basis, we're getting information in the insurance, right? All public entities in the state of California. And so trends, what happened? What could that happen to us? Do we have the right insurance? What's the risk assessment? What can we do to make sure it doesn't happen here? So we now, moving forward, we had the audit, it had a list of things we had to do, we had to actually report that so the risk pool would accept us for insurance and covering us if something happened, to hit that mark over the next two to three years. Now what we're going to have is an electronic dashboard, and it has money attached to it in real time. We're adjusting that work plan. Hey, we never thought about this a year ago, we need to now. All of you need to do the following. So in real time, we're doing that. We're also talking, starting to talk to, because they haven't been really helpful, as you can imagine, but all the utilities. Like, right, what should we be doing? Who should be in the room? How should we be having those conversations? So we, Mill Valley, haven't been in the room, but those who represent us and look out for us at the broader risk pool are. And they're trying to figure out how to have those discussions statewide and what we need to be thinking about adding our utilities to the conversation. So that is happening.
They should have a discussion with AT&amp;T.
Exactly.
Stephen, I've got no questions either. Members of the community, do you have questions on this item for questions or comments? Yeah? You can have questions or you can make a comment.
If I understood you correctly, you said that Mill Valley, the City of Mill Valley does not have an IT department? I found that to be, I'm not a tech person, but I found that to be kind of remarkable. Is that cost-effective? Is it secure? Wouldn't it be better to have everybody under one roof and under one jurisdiction?
Yeah, that's a good question. And most of the small cities and towns in Marin County, you know, just don't have the bandwidth to have an entire IT department. I mean, we're a city of 150 employees, and so, you know, I can maybe turn it over to the city manager if he has any thoughts on this, but it's something that we contract out for, and it's been a really successful relationship over the years. Marin IT basically built our IT infrastructure and system, and so contracting out for them, I find, is very successful. But, you know, it's always a question of contractors versus in-house, and there's pros and cons for both sides, but...
Yeah, I think Lynn answered it perfectly. I think we always do the assessment, one, is it fiscally responsible? So what is, you know, what's cheaper to hire someone full-time? And then you look at the service delivery, what do you receive? And so with us, what we found, it's not cheaper to hire our own person, and it actually doesn't benefit us, like Lynn said. We have a team of like seven experts that are available to us based on their expertise, based on what we need. And again, Marin IT is really unique. If Marin IT was not in service, I mean, to put it in perspective, our contract is just over $200,000 a year for Marin IT, and what they provide us, they're one of the best in the area. Let's say they weren't in service, and we had to go out and outsource and fill the service that they provide us and hire people, it would be well over $600,000, and we'd probably still get a lesser of a service. It's ever-changing. It's something that we do have to evaluate, to your point, every couple of years. Hey, is this the right, are we going down the right path? You know, there's always changes in the industry. And we just did this assessment with the help of Lynn, and we said, we need to stay with Marin IT for now. But again, we're a smaller agency, but again, it wouldn't be cost-effective or beneficial.
Other questions or comments on the item? Saying none. Do we have any online questions or comments? Okay, none. Okay, so we'll close public comments on that. Any commentary from the council? Okay, good. Can I get a motion to approve the, whatever, what is it?
So moved.
Yeah.
To approve our response to the grand jury.
Resolution, authorizing the mayor to execute this. There we go.
Yep, second.
Second, okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, motion passes, 5-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lynn for that. Yeah, that's awesome. Very good.
That's going to be a hard act to follow. Lynn Walsh, you are amazing. Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, city council members. Rick Navarro, your Mill Valley Police Chief. It's an honor to be here tonight. My heart is always full every time I come here. It's just wonderful to see, we had a great audience tonight. I know they've probably gone to bed, eaten dinner, gone to bed, but it was, you guys are the hard chargers, and I love it. The last time I was here to do a presentation was actually on e-bikes, which we're going to talk about tonight. And I came in and we were proposing an ordinance on e-bikes. And I hope you guys have seen a difference. I know it's still tough out there in the community, but we have led the way here in the state of California with our ordinance, and it's all because of our city council members and their support and keeping us working hard there at the police department. So thank you for your leadership and all that we have been able to accomplish. I should put my name tag up here. On April 26th, the Marin County Civil Grand Jury issued a report titled, "With Power Comes Responsibility: Use Underage 16 Operating Class II E-Bikes A Safety Risk." And so I have submitted a draft grand jury response. We had six findings that we needed to respond to and four recommendations. I have submitted, like I said, the draft response for our city. I know that it is an emotional issue on some levels. A lot of community members have spoken out about the grand jury response, and so I would like to open it up by saying I am completely open to making some changes to those findings and recommendations. This is a partnership. I work for all of you. We are trying to do our best here at the Mill Valley Police Department. We have issued approximately 100 citations, and all of those individuals that were issued a citation have to attend a safety course. That safety course is put on by the Marin County Bicycle Coalition. With success comes difficulties. We have overwhelmed the Marin County Bicycle Coalition, and so we are looking for additional funding to help the Marin County Bicycle Coalition in putting on additional safety courses, as well as looking at some other opportunities. We have also partnered with our schools, and I applaud Councilmember Parry and Councilmember Joakim in working with our schools. We have worked with our superintendent of TAM High, and I've spoken with the superintendent of Mill Valley Middle School. And I think this is going to be really significant when we start at the schools, because they are going to see the kids and what they are riding to and from school each and every day. And so they are working on a registration program to ensure we do not have those illegal electric bicycles that are on our roadways. And so I'm very excited about that partnership. I look forward to that. Also, we at the, my peers amongst the Marin County Police Officers, our Police Chiefs Association, have formed a committee so that we can work together to focus on this issue. And we want to partner, as you will see in our staff report and in our response, we want to partner with the medical field, the school district, and other advocates so that we ensure that we have some good policy out there that has teeth so that we can make a difference in our community. So with that, I submit our six findings and our four recommendations, and I'm open to questions.
Okay, let's start with questions. And Vice Mayor, would you have any questions?
Why don't we start down there?
Okay, we'll start with the former mayor in that case. Former mayor, if you're done texting, do you have any questions?
No, I'm looking at my agenda here, but on the e-bikes and this AB 1778, Rick, pertaining to enforcement stuff, so tell me how locally are we going to be able to, if that's implemented? I haven't dove into this whole thing. Is DMV going to make it illegal? Then we operate off of that. How's briefly, because I know that's a big contention.
So that's legislation, I'm sorry.
No, that's my question, it's just some clarification.
So that's legislation that has been submitted by Assemblymember Conley, and it still has not been signed off yet. It's making its way through. It looks like it's going to be successful. However, Marin County is going to be a... successful. However, Marin County is going to be a beta test. So it's only going to be for, an opportunity for the municipalities and the county of Marin to adopt a resolution to support and enforce that legislation. Really, it has been watered down quite significantly. I'm sure some people will be able to speak to that, but it has been watered down from its original draft and the focus in that legislation is to make it illegal for individuals under the age of 16 from operating a class II e-bike.
Somebody asked you this, how are you going to enforce it?
That's a, that's a great question and that's.
Being a law enforcement, it's like me guessing if a kid's 15 or 16 driving a car, you know, which one, as a police officer, is, do you have reasonable suspicion to pull someone off and hold them, they ask them their age?
Very astute, council member, because being a former police officer, you know, that's a, that's a, that's a significant issue, right?
Yeah.
Yes. So that's going to be difficult for us and, and unless it's very, very upfront that maybe it's a 12-year-old, that looks like a 12-year-old, but typically what we're going to have to do is probably have another reason to stop that individual for riding that e-bike and then question them as to their age. Typically, kids under the age of 16 do not have an identification, right? They don't have a driver's license. They don't have an identification card. We have to reach out to the parents. We have to track them down and find out the age of the individual. That's going to be tough for us and, and I'm quite concerned about it. And we've talked about that with our command staff at the police department. We've talked about that amongst the other police chiefs. And so we, we will have to look at a way that we do that because in our ordinance, we want this to be positive. We don't want this to be a negative interaction where we're stopping individuals based on their age for riding an electric bike. I support electric bikes and the transportation that they are able to provide. I don't want our officers out there stopping people left and right just based on, on their age. And what we did in our ordinance, which I'm very proud of, is this is all about education and we did this so we didn't send people to traffic court. I didn't want to get our youth involved in the criminal justice system. I wanted them to be educated and learn how to ride a bike, an e-bike safely within our community. So thank you for the question. You're, like I said, that's very astute.
The other question, just the last one, Mr. Mayor, is so class one and class two, is there a distinction between the two? That's obvious.
The obvious is, is class two is throttle control and the class one is, is pedal assist. They have the same motor, 750 watts. They are supposed to go the same speed limit, but as you know, our youth are very astute when it comes to looking how to manipulate those systems and that would make those bikes go faster. We talked about this before in front of council and we will have to find out if they have done that and then there, those bikes will be illegal to operate on the roadway. So, the distinction is that class two, basically, they have a throttle, but class one, pedal assist and could have a throttle.
Other questions?
Mr. Mayor, can I just add to that?
Sure.
So when I, we're having this conversation, I just, two things I just throw out there for the council maybe to consider as we go through this because I think, you know, I know, because we've been working with our cohorts on this for the last 18 months, that our city has taken the lead. And so I appreciate the work of the council and the chief. On finding two, originally, we, we supported that, but in really looking at it on the class two, if you read the way this is, this is worded, my recommendation is that we can't make that finding and that we need further analysis. We need further analysis because of the way our fire departments in the county document injured, injury accidents. They lump them all together and so they're not classified the way they should be. We actually did an informal kind of survey within Mill Valley and three other agencies in the county and there weren't any class two injured, injury accidents. Not to say it happened or not, my point is, it's very, right now, we're not documenting it the right way. So I don't know that we can make finding two. My recommendation is that we don't and we say it's due to further analysis as needed. And then it carries into the question that you asked, Councilmember Wickham, what about legislation? I think we take this time to work with our cohorts and really dive into the data in Marin County and outside on class two and what is it? And at the same time, we follow the legislation and when the legislation's passed, if you would like, through the mayor, the, the staff will bring back, what do we currently have in place now? What is this new legislation? And do we have any additional data on class II e-bikes? And that may help you down the road, make a decision in the affirmative or not. The other thing is, if someone modifies someone, something, then we already have the ability to handle it. It's like the Super 73s, right? We already have law on the books. I'm always leery of adding additional laws because it becomes very difficult to enforce. But I think we have, you know, our, our chief, he's also the president of the Marin County Chiefs Association, he has supported, you know, Conley on his legislation. We appreciate it. He's trying to help us. But if you look at what we have on the books, we're pretty close. It's the class two discussion. And so if it's modified, like in the grand jury report, we, we can do something about it. So that's, that's my recommendation as a starting point maybe to the discussion. I'm not sure we can make finding two, see if you agree. Further analysis is needed and that conversation then will carry over to staff of follow-up as we go in the future months.
Great. Caroline, do you have questions for the chief?
Yeah, so I think that in dealing with this issue, we've been playing catch-up and I think we've done a really good job in, in being the first to kind of catch up, but it's still evolving in terms of what qualifies as class two. And the difference between class one and class two is class two can actually be pedal assist or throttle. So it's not always evident just by looking at a bike going by unless you're familiar with the different bikes. They're supposed to, all the manufacturers are supposed to have a class label on it. The challenge becomes when, how do you deal with class II e-bikes that get modified and go faster than 20 miles per hour and then essentially they fall into the bucket of being class three, which is illegal. So, a couple of questions in terms of what, just to get a better sense of what you are currently seeing and what you're currently finding in Mill Valley and then what you see as how you are going to be able to enforce. So, I'm thinking like when the class two suddenly becomes modified and now it starts looking like a class three, you know, are we setting up speed traps situations, you know, down Miller at certain times during the day when we know kids are on their bikes? And then, and I'll have other questions, but I also want to talk about just how are we getting the information out? Because while we've had meetings, we have an ordinance on the books, there's still this prolific increase in the class twos that are very, I think, dangerous. And specifically with respect to types that are like Super 73s and the manufacturers, I feel, are taking advantage of the fact that we do not have solid laws yet on the book throughout the state of California. So, I don't know where you want to start, but that's kind of where I've been thinking about it because I'm very concerned in terms of safety and then if we have something on the books, how are we really going to enforce and put teeth on to it?
Great questions. You, you've asked a lot, all at once.
And they're not speed traps, they're speed operations?
Yes, absolutely. Yes. So, we, we have done a lot, as you know, and we've done a lot of education. Before we even got to the ordinance, we did a lot of education. We had our electronic signs on, on Miller. We've had our electronic signs on Blytheale. We worked with the schools. We sent numerous letters home to the school. The most recent one was very forceful in letting everyone know about the, the, the e-bike issues and some e-bikes are illegal and it took time for us to catch up. As you said, it's, it's ever-evolving and it's getting more prolific out there with our youth riding these bikes. We have, we pushed things out on our social media platforms. We've done a very humorous but educational video that we wanted our youth to watch. And so we, we really framed it towards our, our juveniles and, and we had a lot of great positive feedback on that. So we've done a lot of education and then we've also pushed out our, our ordinance to all the community members that we could get, that we could touch by letters home to the parents. The principals at the schools have been really, really good. And, and so we've done a lot on the education piece. It starts at home. It starts with the parents. They have to take some responsibility on what are they buying their kids. And so, you mentioned one name brand that is illegal to operate on the roadway because it offers multiple layers on, is it a class one? Is it class two? Is it an off-road? Those are illegal to operate on our roadway. And early on, we were learning just as much as the community was learning. I didn't realize a, a Super 73 with all these options on it were illegal. It's, it comes, as you stated, with a sticker that says class two. Well, it truly is not a class two. And it wasn't until our partnership with the Marin County Bicycle Coalition, when Gwen Frowe said, "We're not going to allow those Super 73s to come to our class anymore because they're illegal." I was like, well, I need some literature on this because I'm learning as, as we're going as well. So, we, we now know there's several manufacturers out there that, as you stated, are manipulating these kids to make a quick buck. Families are buying them because all these other kids have them, so let me buy this bike. And there needs to be some strength at home and there needs to be, be some education at home. I would love to go back to, or go and present back to school night and talk to the parents as they come to the schools and let them know. This is a very serious matter and the last thing I want to do is have our officers and fire personnel respond because your kid was involved in an accident on our busy roadways. So, as, as the city manager stated, we're doing a lot. We're leading from the front, but there's still a lot that needs to be done. And I know I didn't answer all of your questions, but yes, we've, we've issued almost 100 citations and it's because our officers are out there on the roadways during those peak times, kids coming and going from school and, you know, other athletic events or what have you and, and enforcing the rules of the road.
Yeah, so that's what I, I'm wondering, you've done a lot of work, right? You've got the education out there. You've, you've done your outreach and still we have a, we have a problem. So, that would be, that's what kind of like a follow-up question. What is it that you're recommending that the next step should be? Is it, you know, is it for Councilmember Parry and I to work in terms of getting on support for a registration program, you know, and, and seeing how we can enforce it there?
Yeah, I think that's a big, I think that's going to be, that's going to have a huge impact because if these kids are not allowed to ride those e-bikes to school, the parents are now going to be impacted, right? They're either going to have to drive their kids to school. Those kids are going to have to walk. They're going to have to find an alternative transportation plan. And so, they're going to be impacted or, or the kid's going to get their, their bike impounded or what have you because they're going to continue to ride it until it's going to be locked up by the school and then the parents are going to have to come and pick it up.
Can I just?
So that's a big deal.
One, one thing, I know it's like DOI. I mean, it's taken 40 years for us to, so it's going to be a long time. Can the city implement a citywide maximum speed on e-bikes? I mean, could we put a limit, maximum speed 20 miles per hour?
I'm going to have to defer.
Because you know what, I know that city attorney, but could we, because the, the class three is, the class two is because of the speed, it's not because of the bike itself.
I think the vehicle code is very strict about that. I don't.
Well, I don't know on this one. So I'm just saying, this is a comment, one way to settle this whole thing is do radar, keep these kids, keep the speed down. I don't know.
My understanding is that our standard speed limit applies on the right-of-way and we can only impose separate rules on the sep, completely separated bike paths.
So if the speed limit is 25 on East Blytheale or Miller Avenue, Lynn, if that kid's doing 26, we should decide for speed?
Right, that would be an enforcement matter, but yes, that 25.
That would be one way to climb down on the speed issue because most of our streets are 25 except for.
I will say this, we've done multiple Office of Traffic Safety operations. We've also run radar with other outside agencies on the multi-use path, which as you know, is in our jurisdiction, but we partner with the county and CHP. So we've done a lot of that, but I really think the big impact that we're going to have is the partnership with the schools, that these kids are coming and going each and every day. That's going to have a big impact.
I relate to that, but you know, I recall I was around when Ed Johnson used to be here in Mill Valley and for old timers, Ed kept the speed limit at 25. I'm just saying that, the word gets out really fast, we're enforcing the speed police-wise, that would help more than the schools telling the kids because kids will start recognizing it's a big fine behind that. And so I'm just, that's my law enforcement background, the art of all this process.
Thank you.
Just one quick follow-up. And so, when you started your, your talk, you mentioned about looking at the findings and the recommendations. Is there anything that you would change?
I, I think finding two, after looking at it more closely, I think finding two should be changed. To state that, it requires further analysis. And I say that because that dashboard, the more I look at that dashboard, it's, it's all encompassing, class one, class two, class three, illegal e-bikes. The EMS personnel that are responding to these accidents aren't recording the type of e-bike. So, they don't, we don't know. We don't know what the data says. And it would, it's hard to make an emotional decision without having the true facts and the information in front of you.
I know, and I think that's a challenge because if we don't have it set up to capture that data, then how are we ever going to know in order to make an informed decision?
Yeah. That's going to have to come from the public health officer who, that's his dashboard and he oversees the EMS department and it's going to have to come to, to them to require someone that is responding to those types of accidents to record that information because law enforcement doesn't respond to all accidents. You know, the fire department or the paramedics are responding to those accidents. We don't respond to all of those.
So is there anything in the interim that we can be doing to address the safety issues?
I think that's a, that's a broad question because there is a lot that we could probably be doing as far as our presence out on the streets, as far as working with the police chiefs, as far as working with the schools, working with the EMS, developing this committee that's going to involve all of our partners, I think is going to be a big step if everyone agrees to, to partner. I don't know that everyone's going to agree to partner. There's some jurisdictions that said that they don't need a partner. I think we need a partner and I'm all about collaboration and I think that's going to be another big step.
And I also recognize we're just looking at our response to the grand jury report, but certainly, I think additional conversations need to be had and if we can do it with our fellow jurisdictions, I think it'd even be even better, but.
So there's a bigger conversation about all those things. So, again, just on this report. Max, do you have questions on the report?
Yeah, so Councilmember Joe Akam asked some of them, but just, well, first, Chief, thank you for all of your work on this. As, as you said, we've really led the way and it has been our council, but we followed you, right? And so just really thank you and, you know, even on AB 1778, right, you were at the initial press conference, you've been in the IJ, the police department's done videos and outreach and so just major kudos to you. Just a question, if we do go the further analysis route, and that was something I was going to suggest after talking to you and to the city manager over the last couple of days on this. I get the data piece, right, which we kind of don't have too much control over. What other things do we have control over that we might be able to get some data back or analyze data that's out there that would be helpful, in your opinion, in us making a decision if this legislation gets passed on whether to implement it?
Yeah, we could do our data here locally and, and we do. I, I've supplied Vice Mayor Burke with some accident reports around our schools. We do have that information. It's a small piece and our numbers are so small here in our jurisdiction. And we're talking about a county-wide legislation that's going to impact all the jurisdictions. So, it's hard just to look at our small numbers and compare those to a city of San Rafael or the city of Nobato and all of us be on the same page. But locally, we can look at it and if Damon Conley's, Assemblymember Conley's legislation comes down, all of you review it and you decide this is, this is what you want to pass as a ordinance here for us to do the beta test, then that's what we will do. It's going to be up to all of you to, to take a look at that and decide. Is this what we want to do as a community? I will say this, I'm very proud of the ordinance that we have and the work that we are doing in the city of Mill Valley. We, like I said, we have led the way. I could keep saying that, but your officers have done a ton of work, so I don't ever want to minimize that.
Great, thank you. And it sounds like we do have some local data, which is awesome and happy to support on any pressure requests that go to the county too.
Yeah, just one note though, that's, it's all been on bicycles and we haven't differentiated e-bikes.
Okay, so under two comments, Rick, I hate to interrupt again, but on this whole data issue, what about if we do traffic survey?
what about if we do traffic surveys like we do for speed, you know, radar, right? Can we have cadets or someone just on Miller Avenue for like an hour? Just using a radar and variety of things, taking the records of bikes flying up and down, what, what's the average speed? Kind of giving some data, what we're looking at, maybe are they riding too on a bike? Is it, no one's wearing a helmet, see what I'm saying?
That will take further analysis, former mayor.
Further analysis, I know that.
I'm just kidding.
And the reason I bring that, because I was, I was a cadet, I had to, I had to do that for so many times for the city, but.
Hey, so, let's just, do you, Council, could we, do you mind if we just kind of focus on our response to this civil grand jury? So, I, I mean, we definitely should have a bigger discussion about e-bike safety and all the things that we can do, the things that we have done, but let's just keep focused on this response for the time being.
Well, Mayor, I was just going to say, I think the, the connection, right, to the responses, if we're going to change to further analysis, the question is, what is that analysis?
Correct, and that will be something that we should definitely delve into, right? But right now, we're just responding to this civil grand jury. Vice Mayor, do you have questions, specific questions?
I do. First off, I agree that we want to respond to the grand jury and continue to have this discussion. And I agree with what has been said about the efforts we've made. But I'm really concerned that it's going to take a tragedy to take the steps to prevent the tragedy. Right? So, my questions are less about the findings and how we respond to that, a little bit more about the recommendations and then other steps we might take, which then leads away from the grand jury report, but I want to get it on the record tonight. So, on your recommendations, you recommend that R one and R four not be implemented. And my question for you is, do you mean that those should never be implemented or should be implemented in the fullness of time pending legislation, regulations that come down from on high? Just want to clarify that a little bit. Because as it reads, it can be reacted to by the public as Mill Valley doesn't want to do this. So, could you clarify that?
Yeah, that's for right now, that's here and now, that's what I'm responding to, is the recommendations that are current here from the grand jury. If something down the road comes forward and we feel like it's going to add to the safety of the community, then by all means, you know, we'll, we'll implement what we need to.
Great. Regarding R four, you agree with the finding, but not the recommendation saying it's not applicable for us to discuss how the county should spend its money. But can we make recommendations to the county about how they might allocate money? For example, for the training course that we ran out of money for? Can we modify our response to reflect that while it is the county's responsibility, we urge our supervisors to consider how they might fund this?
We, we can absolutely do that. My, my platform on that was the same as Lynn Walsh's. We did not want to speak to other jurisdictions on how they expense their funds. But if that's something that we want to recommend to the county because it's a county-wide issue and Marin County Bicycle Coalition that conducts the safety program is a county-wide program? Then, yeah, absolutely. But I was looking at it that I don't, I, I wouldn't want the county to, to dictate to Mill Valley how we expense our funds.
I just think massaging that response a little bit to reflect that we understand that it's their responsibility and their power, but since it is county-wide, it would be very helpful. Question for the city attorney. Do we have the power to, at our very small, local municipal level, to outlaw a specific dangerous object?
So, when it comes to vehicles on the public right-of-way, the streets and highways that go through Mill Valley, they're actually subject to primarily state law jurisdiction. And that's the same reason we can't establish a different speed limit currently is that the state has really preempted how regulations can be adopted on the public streets. So, we do have a bit more leeway over our, say like the, you know, some of the S L Ps or a fire road that's not a public right-of-way. But as long as people can drive from other communities into Mill Valley, the idea is that we don't want to have that patchwork of regulations and have one, a vehicle be illegal in Mill Valley that's legal elsewhere. So, we are limited in what we can do in the public right-of-way.
So, we would need to encourage Assemblyman Conley or others to consider modifying the language in their bill to perhaps highlight specific threatening objects, would that be possible?
If the, if the concern is with respect to the safety of some of the equipment, I do think that the, the state is the right entity to regulate or prohibit that dangerous equipment.
Okay.
If not, of course, the federal government could do it as well since they also have jurisdiction over roads and highways.
Well, that'll happen real quick. And then, back to the chief. I really appreciate the work that the council members are doing with the school district and the receptiveness of both districts to this. We know that there are four locations where, let's call them underage riders are. Can we start the school year with a sweep and put boots on these things? Or otherwise, really flag them? We know, we have an inventory provided by third parties that give us a rough number of WhatsApp at various schools and areas. And we know they're going to be there. So, could we put effort behind that with cadets or others and with school staff, the safety staff, to make our point early in the school year?
So, that's a great point because we've had multiple meetings with the Tampa Plies High School District Office. And our fine lieutenant back there, Lieutenant Sean McCracken, that's the recommendation that he made that seemed to be very receptive with the schools, that they put at one of those very hard locks that go around the, the e-bikes that are illegal e-bikes and then make them come to the office to unlock that so that they can get it to their parents to let them know that those e-bikes are illegal.
Let's continue that discussion. And then the last point was just around insurance liability for the parents. And how do we get that point across? So, city attorney, do you have any thoughts on that? So, when you try to unlock your boot, there's a note that says, "By the way, you're liable."
Yeah, I would have no, I, I do think that in California, parents can be liable for the negligent acts of their children in toward if there was a serious injury, especially if there, if the plaintiff can show that the parent was negligent by, for example, providing the child with a dangerous device. So, you know, a good attorney should be able to establish liability there. I'm not aware of any insurance coverage currently and I, I understand that you two have looked at this, that parents can buy for an illegal e-bike. And so, I do think it's a serious concern and maybe should be raised for them. I have no problem with putting a note informing them of the potential liability on the, the boot, the ticket that you attached to the e-bike, yeah.
Understood, thank you very much.
Great, thanks. Specifically, your, the city's ordinance that was passed at least two years ago now, Novato, who else has adopted that ordinance?
Tiburon, I'm not sure if Beldeder has yet. I know that they're looking at it. Actually, every jurisdiction has called me and asked me for our staff report, our ordinance. They're either working on it. The only one that I haven't seen make any true effort is the city of San Rafael. And, you know, maybe that will happen, but all the other jurisdictions.
Have reached out, but only two that you're aware of have actually.
Yeah, and I don't know, and I don't know if the city of Novato is going to pass it. They were really going very hard on, on that. I talked to council members, the police chief, I just don't know where they stand right now.
Yeah, so the, I'm just raising this because to the question about coordination, this just goes to show how hard this is. So, I have been talking about this for two years at the Transportation Authority Board. And I have tried repeatedly to get the other jurisdictions in Marin County, including the county, to adopt your ordinance, right, or the city of Mill Valley ordinance. And we've been successful at getting two, basically. So, they're all very interested, right, but there's been no action whatsoever. So, it's really hard to get people to take action on this thing, even when it's very apparent. And we brought in healthcare professionals into those meetings to present to them, to show them how dangerous this is. And even with that data, it was difficult to get them to do it. So, what you're doing in Mill Valley, and thank you for everything that you've done, is really unusual. And it's just, it's a leap ahead of what everybody else is doing in really taking responsibility for making the streets of, of Mill Valley safe.
So, say, in response to all that, make your ordinance even stronger. We have a lot of guidance to, to do that and I think seventeen seventy-eight will help us with that. Cyclical, I think it's, you know, there's a lot going on right now, but still, kids are growing up. They're still going to, you know, be, hopefully, class twos will be less and less. If they're outlawed, there'll be lots, less of them on the, in the street. You know, they're very scary. I tried one out, super seventy-three. And you get to, from here to, up to the men's room in full speed really fast. By the time you get up to the men's room, they're so scary, you wouldn't even need to use the men's room by the time you got up there. So, I think that you, it's, all that you can do is to keep on doing it. You've done a great job and I would really keep on pushing to do what you're doing. And, and we'll, I know that Bob and I will keep on doing what we'll be doing. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much for your comments. Anybody else in the public want to make a comment on this topic? Anybody online want to make a comment? Yes, there's somebody who wants to make a comment. So, we're reading it out or?
No, there were three ecomments made and we're going, I believe we're going to take a short recess to allow council members to read the.
Just a five-minute recess to allow council members to read the ecomments.
Great, good, and then we'll bring it on back here.
Okay, thank you so much, five-minute recess.
Or, yeah, do you guys need five minutes to read? Or less. To that section of our letter, I think R one through R four.
Why don't we discuss that?
Let me, let me just do that first, right? So, that would be my recommendation. So, one, three, four, five and six are things we agree with. Number two is something that we'd like to get more information on, if that's the correct way of putting on it. Okay, and then for the recommendations, I personally think that R one, B and C are non-objectible, something that we should agree on. I think R two, R three and R four are all good. These are things that we should strive for. We want to have cooperation, we want to have funding, we want to have involvement of the school districts and other partners. And this is precisely what we're trying to accomplish. It might be slightly out of bounds for us to suggest this, but I think that's fine. I mean, this is what we believe is the right way to go about doing this. This is what we've been trying to do for two years now. So, I think that's precisely what we want to do. That would be my recommendation. My recommendation would be to go back to, to agree on F one, three, four, five and six. Number two needs more data. Agree on R one, B and C, R two, R three, R four. And say that R one needs, again, more information, more data, just as we've said before. And if the state bill comes down and, you know, makes all class two under the age of sixteen, you know, illegal, then so be it, right? That'll be something that we'll work with and that'll be a way of forcing compliance. So, that's my recommendation. Who would like to go next, Vice Mayor or?
I would. I agree with your assessment of the findings. With regard to the recommendations, I think it's in the wording of our response, not the spirit. So, the wording, recommendation, R one will not be implemented. I brought this up in my comments to the chief because it's not warranted at this time or given the circumstances or pending state legislation that would govern a response from our jurisdiction. But I think that as worded, it's a little bit too sharp. R two, I'm fine with our response. R three, I'm fine with our response. R four, as I expressed earlier, I think it is within our purview to recommend that we believe the supervisor should find the funds. So, if there's a way to word that that you're comfortable with, that would be my recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, so basically, you agree on R two, three and four with me? And on R one, you, what would you want differently on that?
It's simply the wording of our actual response, which is, it is not warranted. And I think we, the consensus of our conversation here is it is warranted under the right circumstances.
Correct, yeah.
And I would just be a little bit more, add a little bit more color to that so we're not put in the camp of a jurisdiction that doesn't believe, this could be misrepresented by people who.
Well, R one A is the same issue as F two, right? So, that's the one where we need more data. B and C are wearing helmets, which, would you agree is a valuable recommendation?
No, I, I, I agree. I'm just saying the way we write our answer here can be misunderstood and misrepresented.
Got it, okay, got it, okay. Max, please, or, yes?
Just for clarification, we're talking about, when you're talking about the, the language, it would be, that's what would be in the cover letter. Because the penal code, there's a certain response, right? Am I right in there on that? So, what we were talking about is when you want a different language to be used, that should be in a cover letter. But your limit is to what you can respond.
There is a, there's a specific form and each item, we have to say, agree, disagree, partially disagree, et cetera. But we can change the tone to say it is not warranted at this point in time based on what we know now or make minor changes to the narrative that follows the immediate, the response to the question.
Yeah, I totally agree with Urban, what you said and with the changes Stephen made. You know, I think my, my approach on this has been kind of all of the above, right? I think what we've done is great. I think what Damon's trying to do is good also, right? I think the work with the school district is imperative if you're going to have any success on any of this, right? I think that, you know, anything we can put in a cover letter that's not defensive, right? Because I think some of this, right, is like, you can come across as defensive of like, oh, no, we're doing all these good things when it's like, as Stephen said, a real big issue that's just waiting for a calamity to happen, right? And so, I think pointing out the good things we're doing that others should follow while saying we're just beginning this process, right? And we're open to changes as they may come from the state and with our partners, I think is, is the right tone to, to strike. I'm supportive of seventeen seventy-eight as adopting it. If it does pass, it's sailed through unanimous in the assembly, unanimous in the Transportation Committee in the Senate. It's going to pass unanimously in the Senate, it'll be signed and it'll be signed next month. So, this isn't something that's going to come next year or the year after, this is going to come in like a month. And so, if we do have questions on additional data that we need or questions we have for other jurisdictions, I'm happy to help on that, get those answers and then hopefully we can implement it. That would be my recommendation if it does pass.
Okay, Caroline?
So, I'm going to be echoing a lot of what has already been said. Agree with the findings and how that was worded with respect to the recommendations. Just another clarification for recommendation number four. Actually, how did you want to word that? What was the recommend, what was the proposal?
Well, our response currently reads, recommendation number four is not applicable to this jurisdiction and should be commented on only by the board of supervisors. If there's room in our response to reflect our belief that, however, we would recommend that the supervisors look closely at a county-wide funding program for education or just something to that effect.
Yeah, because I actually like the way the recommendation is worded because it has the word should. So, it is what you would want Marin County to do. So, I agree that if you want to change that wording to soften it, but I, I do like that.
We agree that they should.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. And then with respect to R one, you know, if seventeen seventy-eight does pass, then I'd, I'd like us to quickly move on it and do something similar. So, with respect to R one, again, did you, was the proposal to carve out A? Or how were you going to word that versus requiring further analysis?
Yeah, that was it, basically to require further analysis, right? Yeah, and obviously it might become moved very quickly, right?
Yeah, yeah, and then, yeah, be on the record for supporting seventeen seventy-eight.
Yeah, okay.
I support Caroline and the other York.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I can mention to the council, I think we can do everything if, again, we're running out of time. And so, could we, could you direct us to do that? We think we can, and then work through the mayor and vice mayor?
Can I just, yeah, sure.
Stephen, you want to work on this with me?
Okay, good.
And just one other thing though, the one, the Vice Mayor's comment on, I think, is it R four, response number four. You know, one of the things, I know what we'll hear because I've been in the room multiple times on this with the county, so we can certainly make the statement on funding. make the statement on funding, but in general, the county of Marin is not responsible for traffic. It's not one of their governmental, per the government code, and so they're not regarding things like this. They're going to push, we know what their response is going to be, and I wonder...
They're also responsible for public health.
Well, yeah, but it's related to vehicles.
Understood. It's an election year, supervisors are running, it's making an issue.
I just, I just put it out there of just working through the mayor and vice mayor, I'm glad you're part of it, words will matter, and so we just may want to be creative how we...
Yeah, understood.
But I understand the health, I mean, their own health official did say this is a, it's a health issue.
So, okay, so if that's an amenable solution to the rest of the council, can we pass the resolution and then just with the proviso that, you know, that Stephen and I will basically work together with staff to finalize this?
That, that's fine, but just since we've been working on this, can we make sure we circle back so we see it? I realize the Brown Act situation, but I'm just wondering when, when we see it.
Is that a problem?
Since we're working on this issue.
What is this doing?
We don't need to necessarily see it to approve it, just to see it after it's been sent.
Yeah, after it's sent, yeah.
Usually I wouldn't care about seeing something like this after, but this is an issue we've been close to.
Oh no, it'll be public.
Yeah, I think we'll find a way for you guys to make sure that you're fine with it. Okay, so, and with that, can we get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much, everybody, for your time. Thank you for sitting through this entire meeting to make your comments, appreciate it, and we're not done yet. This is like becoming the longest meeting of the year now. Item 8, first reading of an ordinance renewing blah de blah, having to do with military equipment. This should be fairly quick, I think.
I read it. Do you have any questions?
Do you have any questions? Hey, don't throw me under the bus here.
I have no questions.
All right, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Lieutenant Sean McCracken with the Police Department. I appreciate the opportunity to present our annual military equipment use report this evening and request renewal of ordinance 1344 of the Mill Valley Municipal Code, Chapter 8.80 Military Equipment Use Ordinance. In summary, in the year that passed since this ordinance was last renewed, the Police Department did not use any of our military equipment in the line of duty, nor did any allied agencies use their military equipment within city limits. As outlined in the staff report, some of our equipment was used in training exercises during this past year. In preparation for this report, we conducted an internal audit to verify our inventory of equipment and noted that no policy violations were discovered. Additionally, we did not receive any complaints or concerns regarding the current equipment within our inventory. I ask that council receive our report and consider renewing ordinance number 1344 of the Mill Valley Municipal Code, Chapter 8.80 Military Equipment Use Ordinance.
Okay, council, any questions? Seeing none, members of the public, do you have any questions on this item? Yes?
No, just a quick comment that will make the police look very good, make the rest of you look very good, after you finish laughing at it. Okay. What would happen if Mill Valley took the initiative of looking through their stuff that they collect every year and have more money to get next year and more money to get the next year after that, all the military equipment, and take everything that isn't needed and say, can that be used in our war in Ukraine and offer it?
Well, I think it's important to understand what our military equipment actually consists of, because I think when just a general citizen such as yourself thinks of military equipment, you probably think of Humvees and machine guns and those sorts of things, when in reality, the majority of our equipment, which is very small in numbers, are tools that we use to de-escalate a situation that may require some form of lethal force. So primarily, we have 40-millimeter launchers, and what that means is it's a tool that we use that takes a non-lethal round or a less lethal round foam, foam and make, and we can use that to de-escalate a situation that would otherwise require some sort of deadly force. So we wouldn't want to get rid of a tool such as that, right? We have 37-millimeter launchers that use chemical agents. We wouldn't want to get rid of that because we can use that in crowd control in the event that something escalated.
Have you ever had to use them?
Fortunately, as the report indicated, we did not use it this year, and we did not, we have not used it any of the years that we've reported on, to my knowledge, so...
That's sort of where my case stands. And also that a lot of small equipment is what's being, on ground equipment, is what's being, I mean, I know nothing about all this, believe me, but they're using small arms and ground equipment in Ukraine, that's sort of what, what kind of stuff that they're using, but they're actually having to use it. It's just a thought, it might save the nation a lot of money, if not you, but every, every sheriff's department, every police department in the United States did this, wow! And, or that you were the beginning of it, it's just a thought.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the community? Any questions online? None, okay. Deliberation, any deliberative comments? Are we in favor of receiving this report? And let's see, what's the action item on this?
Introduce in way first reading of an ordinance that renews, just carries forward into the next term, our military use...
Would you make that?
So the motion would be to introduce way first reading in ordinance of the City Council of the city of Mill Valley, renewing ordinance number 1344 of Chapter 8.80 to the Mill Valley Municipal Code regarding establishment of military equipment use policy for the Mill Valley Police Department. The state law says that we are to bring this back to you now once a year for a renewal of that ordinance.
Okay, great. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, and we're, just like that, on to item number nine. It's amazing. Okay, last item for tonight is the levy of annual sewer service charges. This is the second time we're discussing this. Do we even have a need for a discussion on this, since we've discussed it already? Just to recap from the last time, this is an annual sewer rate increase. It follows CPI, this is the second reading, and the increase in this past year is 1.96, right? So, which is just FYI, less than the CPI, so...
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
We should ask for public comments.
Yes, public comment on this item. Seeing none in the audience, online, none, okay, thank you, Max. So you, Max has already made his motion?
Second.
Okay, very good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries 5-0. Council requests ideas for future discussion? Seeing none. I would make a request for a coach for my pitching on Thursday, but anyway, wish me luck, and if you want a good laugh, come on out at 6:00 PM. Can I get a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Do we have to sing a song before we leave?
We don't, we don't have to do anything, former mayor. Can I get a vote on the adjournment?
Can we thank the Redwoods? Thank you, Redwoods.
Okay, motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Redwoods. We'll never get invited back because we sat here for three and a half hours, we sang a song, we did basically, you know, whatever. Anyway, thank you, thank you, everybody for being here.